Okay, so I will call this main order. Um, I'm just gonna really quick, I'll do some of the grounding, you know, we got a few new council members here. I'm going to do a quick check. Craig, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine.
Perfect. Uh, can you see us all eating?
Um, I wanted somebody to pass cookies, but yeah.
It's pretty good, Craig. Sorry you missed an hour.
I love cookies, so Cookie Monster.
Um, so I'll just do some of the grounding quick. So I know we got a few new council members, just kind of how goal setting plays in with the budgeting session and everything starting in the next year. Uh, to know it can be a little off putting sometimes because technically this is goal setting for next fiscal year, which is July 1st to June 30th. But it is also kind of next year's plan at work, the calendar year. So it's kind of always a rolling 18 month years kind of what's coming up. Um, so for goal setting, this is really our chance to put out what are all of our priorities, both on just a policy level, but also projects that we want to have looked at in the next 18 months and make as part of the next budget session. So, uh, for Tom and Craig, we kind of use all the input from these three days, um, not come with three days to figure out then the direction of the staff, myself to start putting together the budget. Um, if we included everything everybody wants, and then we'll come back to you guys with that, get your feedback, is that too much? Is it just right? And then we start to use that then to approve the budget by about April next year or the July 1st to June 30th. So this kind of helps set the first stage of that process. Um, something we're doing a little bit different this year and for Tom and Craig, this morphs a little bit every year, just depending on who's in the mayor role, how it's managed. Uh, Amy here just has an introduction that has been helping with the strategic planning for six years.
Oh, good.
Six. And so she'll just kind of be helping take notes, facilitate, um, and she's got a lot of the background on how this has been done year over year. Um, so she'll kind of help manage everything and help direct us if we get off topic a little bit, which might happen a few times. And, uh, so then we'll take all this input. The thing we're doing different this year is we, if you remember last year, we had this huge policy document where they included policies that we just do every year. But it also included specific projects that were things we wanted to do in this next year. So a little confusing on, okay, what's a project? What's a policy? Why are they all lumped together? So with the new strategic plan that we'll go through tonight, it's just a draft at this point still, because this is kind of the first chance we're bringing it to you guys, just get eyes on it. Uh, the high level draft. This then is kind of meant to be, these are the projects we're taking on and specific tactics we're working on. That way that policy document can be most more of a policy document, just things we do every year, less of a why is Gil's campground tucked in a policy document? There you go, Gil. I got it in there.
That doesn't count as talking about.
Pre-cursor. Um, so we're trying to make it then that this strategic plan can really be the projects, the specific things we're looking to get to. And then the policy document can really just be the policies, the things that staff follows every year and shouldn't probably change a whole lot year to year. Um, so that'll be a little bit different this year. So these three days, we'll start off today with kind of the strategic plan, the draft of it. Um, again, for Craig and Tom, this went through some, a lot of community input sessions, a couple of sessions with council, just look at one of our big picture priorities, the big bucket items. And the big rocks doesn't mean that fully encompasses everything we're going to do. It's just, these are the big rocks we want to really prioritize over the next three to five years. So we'll jump into that and then we'll kind of move into, you know, the update presentations from staff on the upcoming road construction projects, any upcoming investments with sewer stuff. Then with all the arts, culture, recreation projects, you know, new parks master plan, starting to dig into which projects from that plan do we want to start prioritizing and looking at funding in the next year? Um, and then kind of the tail end, we'll get to the policy document and just kind of do a review of those and make sure our policies are supporting what we're going to implement over the next year. Um, any questions with all that? Otherwise, housekeeping, restrooms are back over there by the front door. So feel free to get up anytime you need to. We will take breaks, uh, throughout the night, just to make sure everybody's able to stay focused on everything, grab snacks, we got food. Um, at the end of the night, if we kind of get near the end of the three hours and we've only got 15, half an hour left, but the next topic's a really meaty one. We might just jump to a few of the smaller topics and just use what we can in that time and then save the bigger topics. But so we'll kind of see when we get to that. For, uh, Tom and Craig, we, there's been years past where we end up just saying, well, let's just keep powering through. And you go for four hours and you can tell the productivity in that last hour declines a lot. So we'll probably try to stay to the three hours a night. And it seems like it's better to just schedule an extra night if we don't get through it than to try and force everything through in the time slot. So if everyone's good with that, yes. And otherwise, if there is no questions, I'll probably hand it over to Amy and.
Yeah, maybe just do some ground, ready the ground room.
So you have in front of you the goal setting work session agreements. Um, these are agreements that, um, cities have been using these in the goal setting sessions for, uh, I think we inherited these. Um, so, uh, I'm going to give you just a minute just to scan through them. I don't think we have to walk through them in detail, but I just wanted to just scan through them. One of the biggest things I just wanted to ask and that we will, um, away, a place that you will see me step in is for side competition. Because what just seems like, so especially like over here, where I'm going to have to keep an eye on you guys. Um, I'm going to keep training, training my nest over here. Um, but it can be tempting to start moving into side conversations, but we want to keep things moving. So that is a place where I will just, if, if we do move into that, I'll just gently try to remind us to bring it back to the group. Um, so we can keep things moving along, but otherwise, um, you know, I think where, where we're at in this group in terms of respecting everybody's voices. But this isn't a place for grandstanding either. This is a place for how do we find that balance between saying what needs to be said and letting us kind of move through agendas. So I feel like we really try to work that together over these nights. And, um, if anything, I'll try to just check with you at times, is this a conversation you want to keep having? Or is this something we want to move down the road? So those are a couple of those edges that I'll try to help you with along the way. Anything else in terms of the agreements that you want to add that we'll have questions about? All right. So the next document that you have in front of you is, um, a summary of the pre-work session surveys. So prior to these meetings, we send out some questions and invite you to, um, both put respond in writing as well as have some interview conversation time as well. And then this is a summary. So it's important for you to be able to see how you and your colleagues have responded. Um, we're going to take just a minute just to take question ones to pause and just acknowledge and talk about accomplishments. The other items, priorities, special projects, um, long-term challenges, et cetera. Those notes are there for you to refer to as you're moving into the other work sessions. Like, so it just gives, it's just another source of data for you. She can kind of scan and see right off the bat, you know, when we were first doing our interviews, what was coming up across, uh, where you used to have some common ground already, et cetera. So it just helps you see that. Um, but what I'd like to do is just pause with accomplishments, because we're always moving so quickly into all the next layer of work. And a lot has happened in the last year and you named some of that in the interviews. And I just want to give you a moment just to acknowledge that. Um, as you think back on the next years, you look at what you identified for accomplishments, uh, what really ties your attention in terms of what you're feeling proud of right now? And you want to make sure we're building on. So as I think, as you look at this list and also just think about this slide here, what is it that you're feeling proud of? And also wanting to name into the room because we want to be building on these, this body of work as well.
I want to go with the first one. Uh, I mean, I'm proud of all of it, but the, the Main Street corridor, that like has been a conversation. I don't know. When did it start? In 2020? I mean, it started before that, but it really got going.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
They, they for like. It's a long time. And there were some bumps as far as, you know, there was changes and cost and things like that. Um, there were roundabouts added, there were, what was said to be, uh, open the whole time, at least one lane turned into a little closure for the good of saving a lot of money. And anyway, uh, you know, I, I do, you know, however you get down it, I've done it by bike, I've done it by foot and I've done it in a car. And it's just like a total different vibe and in a, and in a really positive way. So I'm, I'm proud of that main artery. Um, and I hope that folks that, you know, there were folks that voiced concerns at the beginning. And I hope now when it's done, they realize that I think was a good move. And I love that it went down, um, you know, it was a four lane road before and it just, it just feels like it moves well, but yet it doesn't feel like, um, it feels safe, you know? So anyway, I'm proud of that. And I hope we keep building on that. Like that's, I think that's our, to me, um, see this in a very hopefully not snotty way, but like I, I can tell when I, I appreciate our, our infrastructure and like the care that we have, uh, when I, when I am rolling around town, I'm very proud of it. And, um, it just, I mean, it's not just for safety, but it does, it kind of gives you like a better mental vibe too, because you're just like, I just feel better. It's just, well, you feel cared for and it just, I mean, the shallow me is like, it just looks better. So.
I think we do a really good job of making a lot of change and, you know, affecting people's lives without them really noticing. I mean, we hear from a handful of people like, wow, they really know this, good or bad. But I think most people in Cedar Falls just get to go about their life and they have no idea that there are, you know, hundreds of little worker bees doing their thing below the surface. And I think people do a really good job of that. We are so lucky and, you know, that I hope that we can keep doing work in that way. Because I think that is what people have become accustomed to and I think it's a really good thing. So kudos to especially our staff for doing that.
I'll touch on similar with financial stability. Budget process last year, um, we had a lot of work that led up to it, a lot of conversation during meeting, but also outside of the meeting. I give Mayor and, and Jen and all staff a lot of credit, but by the time we got down to actually having a public meeting about our budget, we had a pretty good consensus for the most part on where we wanted to be. And, uh, that doesn't happen without a lot of communication and teamwork. Uh, so I really appreciate that, that that process happened. I fully anticipate that it'll happen again this year. But that, that's the biggest thing we have to deal with at the front half of the year. I mean, for, this is going to be the third time I've done that. It's like drinking through a fire hose. So Tom, Craig, like anticipate that, but be very, be very thankful if you've got a really good staff. And, and Danny, just kind of present the budget to begin with, uh, to walk you through it. I mean, I think that's a real blessing for us. So again, I anticipate we'll see that again this year.
All right. But I, adding to that, one of the things that struck me most in a good way, getting on council was even before that, uh, the budgeting and financial principles that we've had in place for a long time that leads to the stability that Chris is talking about. So I encourage you, if we get an award every year, seems like every year for having the budget explained at a level for fifth graders like me, okay?
Call that the Jen Award.
Yeah, that's, 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 yeah, the Jen Award. And so, you know, it may seem daunting to take a look at that, that's the budget, but it was laid out in such a good way. And the policies that we have in place and that require a discipline of the councils over the years to follow, uh, led to that. So what could be a very daunting process, especially last year, uh, and the coming years frankly will, um, really goes as smooth as it may. Anyway, very appreciative of this.
You're just going down the line. I guess the thing I'm most appreciative of is, uh, the Gateway Park Campground. Yeah. Um, oh, wait a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself. Well, I, you know, listening to, to everybody discuss, you know, that, but it really is, I know it didn't, um, happen easily. But to come down through University Avenue and go down Main Street and go up First Street and just feel like you're in the, um, like a sheet of ice or, or smooth as ice, it's really something to be proud of. So, um, but for me, the last, uh, few years or four years has been, um, the little things that aren't on this list. To work with staff and even Chase has been good to work with. But I, I, I think, I think, but he's been great and learning how to, to take care of those little things that don't get on a list. So I think that's probably one of the things I'm more impressed with is the things that aren't on this list that are the day-to-day things that get taken care of.
Yeah, great. Mm-hmm. Well, and I'll throw in quick, I know, again, it's not on the list, but one thing I've, I was talking with, uh, we hit the courier and I know they kind of joked, you know, they don't even really show up to our meetings anymore. Because there's nothing dramatic enough that happens to make it worth coming to the meeting sometimes. So, which I, again, then in one hand, you're like, well, that's, that's rude. You know, well, that's kind of the point and it's not supposed to be dramatic. At the same time, we've, we've done significant projects, we've taken on some big initiatives and things and gotten some things rolling that there is things happening. So to be able to do all that, and we didn't agree on everything, but to be able to move everything forward, keep the city going and get some great projects done in a way that doesn't inspire the newspapers and media to throw out headlines for it, I think it's a big accomplishment with this group. So I just thank all you guys for all the work and teamwork through doing that these last couple of years. I love Craig or Tom, I know you, as not being at the city, if you guys had anything you wanted to.
Uh, I guess the one thing for me is just, um, really echoes a lot of the stuff that you guys are talking about, you know, coming from the outside. Um, it's a great place to live and it's a lot of little things that, that add up to make it that way. So it's not, you know, for me seeing these things, yeah, I agree with all these things. Um, but yeah, it's the, it's the sum of the parts really that, that, you know, if you could have one of these things and none of the rest of it, that wouldn't be, you know, it's really the, the, uh, the collective that makes it great.
Cool.
And that's, that's great. Be cool.
For me, for me, um, you know, something recent from, from an outsider standpoint at this point is, uh, no matter how you felt about the administration departure, um, the leadership transition, it, it from my perspective has been just excellent between, uh, between the mayor and Jennifer's done a great job and she's been so helpful. Um, I think it wasn't, I don't, to me, I don't think it was as traumatic as people thought maybe it would be. But, uh, um, I look forward to, to that new administrator position and seeing how it goes. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
John, do you want to just, John, do you want to just name what they have in front of them for tonight or do you want me to do that? Just to accrue the context.
Me, like the handouts?
Yeah, you've got the list here. I didn't know, did you want, did you want to walk through them or?
Sure. I can just say what's at their desk. Yeah.
Have to. Why? Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, Amy already touched on a few things there, but, um, one of the things too is you'll see kind of the list, it almost looks like an outline. This was kind of what drove kind of how we put a slide deck together. So, and a lot of these things, you'll see, we're starting the strategic plan. But a lot of these other items are really things we felt either came through on the, um, surveys and questions that everyone filled out. And we felt like we wanted to try to touch on a lot of those things, especially the big ones. I think it was page three where Amy summarized kind of on that table. These were kind of the top seven or eight things and we wanted to make sure and cover that. There's also just, you know, I think sometimes throughout the year, there'll be things people will be like, hey, let's talk about that at goal setting. So, you know, we try to kind of keep track of some of those too, but it's really just an outline. It doesn't have to be perfect. Don't have to follow it exactly, but just have an outline. Um, obviously we have Michelle, she'll be getting to, this is kind of the brochure on the strategic plan. Um, you should have a CIP in front of you. You will see it's marked preliminary and I can't say that enough, preliminary, because this is no way close to being balanced yet. But we also understand at some point we need direction from these sessions to kind of help us finish it now. So please don't take it as, oh, it's on here. Oh, okay. We already can fund that and it's ready to go. But, but it's also helpful and you'll see as we go through slides, we'll reference like CIP number 162. So we also just thought we'd give you a copy for now, just to kind of keep following along. Um, some of the other ones are going to come through some slides, just some other handouts. So maybe I'll just wait because either Stephanie or Chase will probably kind of go through those. Um, at the very end, we probably won't get to it over the next couple of nights, but there is a TIF map. We thought as the financial policies come along, we'll probably, it's maybe nice to see that TIF map. And then, um, you should have a slide deck in front of you. Um, the hope is, is those are what we're hoping to get through these first two nights since we're already back here on Monday. Um, so there are probably, you know, slides again for the last one, but, um, that's really what we have, um, for tonight. And then I think our plan would be is after the sessions, we would probably load the slide deck on, um, the website too, if, you know, people wanted to see the materials or, or whatever. But I will be honest, a lot of times we're working on them like right up to the last minute. So, um, so that's why, uh, they're there. But, um, I guess one of the things just want to mention too is obviously thanks, thanks, thanks all staff who've done all the work to work through a lot of these, um, slides. I know how much goes into that. So thank you for, um, directors who've put a lot of, um, time in that. And one of the things I'll say is just maybe a little bit different structure this year, you know, um, not planning and having you listening to me the whole time. Um, so, um, when it gets to their areas, Stephanie or Chase or Craig will be jumping in to kind of present their stuff. They're the experts on it. So, um, they can do it better. Um, so yeah, I'll maybe kind of start with after the strategic plan, talk through a little bit of that, but then we'll just kind of jump into their stuff. So we might be ready for Michelle, maybe for strategic plan, unless you had anything else, Amy, you wanted to cover.
I think we're good. Okay. So we'll move over and, uh, real quick, I'll jump in, we're handing it over to Michelle and just kind of outline again. So Michelle's going to kind of cover the high level overview. This, uh, document here is kind of a high level overview of the specific strategies that we put in for each of the, um, uh, focus areas. We will have later here, after we go over this, we've got slides that kind of list out, here's the specific tactics. We're essentially committing to want to move forward with in this next fiscal year. And then we will, when we have the final document pulled together, it'll have this, the whole report, but it'll also include what are some of those tactics? On the backend, we've got timelines, um, staff responsibilities assigned to all of these tactics. So there's a lot more of a flushed out internal working document to go with it. But for this, just wanted to kind of run by essentially, here's next year's plan of work for the big bucket items that we plan to get to. And then I'll be kind of looking for that feedback of, do those meet a lot of the big ticket items that as a group, we'd like to make sure we're hitting on this next fiscal year. So really these next 18 months. And then we'll always have the small items, the little things, projects here and there that come up. But these are really the big rocks, uh, that we'll be pursuing the next calendar year or so, or fiscal year. So unless there's any questions, Michelle, hand it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you and to members of the council and to the staff that's present. Um, it's great to be with you virtually as the mayor and Jennifer mentioned. My name is Michelle Ferguson and I'm with Rep. Telus. We are a local government consulting firm. And when I look back at the calendar, we started, or I should say, the city started its strategic planning ver, uh, uh, journey exactly one year ago tomorrow. So we had our kickoff meeting with the city, uh, December 5th of 2024. So, um, I know you have a full agenda, so I don't want to take too much time, but I did want to just provide a little bit of a, a little bit of history of what, what transpired over this last year. And really how it relates to what you all are about to embark on over these next three nights to talk about your goals and how that, um, really is aligned with the strategic planning process. So overall, the strategic plan is really intended to be, what is, what is the, the vision for the community over the next three to five years? And as the mayor said, the, the strategic plan itself really identifies, what are those key focus areas? What are those things that must go well in order for Cedar Falls to be the community that the elected officials and the community all said they wanted to see over these next three to five years? So over the past year, um, our team has been working really closely with the elected officials as well as with staff and the community to develop the strategic framework that you have in the handout in front of you tonight. So we started this process a year ago. Um, and, and what was really important that we heard from the mayor and the administration, as well as, as the council was, what does the community think? There was a real interest in ensuring that there was community involvement in the process. And so very early on this time last year, we started by engaging the community in a whole host of ways. We had an online site that was dedicated to the strategic plan. So people could provide input. Uh, we had a community survey that was administered, that anyone was available, was available to anyone in the community to take. We engaged, uh, city staff as well and had a survey of city staff. We had a workshop with all of the department directors to get their input. And then back in, um, February, we also had a series of focus groups with community members too. So we had some targeted conversations with members of the community to really identify or have them identify what's important to them about Cedar Falls and what they hoped would be true in the next three to five years. We brought all that information back to the mayor and council and in March of, uh, earlier this year, we spent a day with the council, beginning to articulate the vision and those big rocks, those key focus areas. Um, as great of a job as the mayor and the council did back in March, they also wanted to make sure that they were in alignment with the community again. And so we took that information back out to the community electronically and tested the vision and the key focus areas with the community and said, well, how did they do? Did they get it right? And so we got a whole series of feedback from the community back in the springtime, I would say. And then we brought that back to the council. The last time we were there, uh, in person was in May, where we spent about a half day, an evening with the council to, to share with everyone the feedback that we got on the framework and, um, talk about kind of next steps. And so the council did some tweaking at the time. Uh, we did some wordsmithing, which is always fun. I know you all remember that fondly. Uh, we had lots of cookies. I think that's what helped the conversation go, go better. Uh, you all came up with a, a magical vision and also articulated those key focus areas. After that, um, we spent some time with the staff again and did, uh, an implementation workshop with the staff. Because obviously as important as it is to have the vision and those key focus areas, the tactics and strategies, the, the what that goes behind it, those actions are just as important in order to see progress. And so, um, we worked with staff to develop implementation plans to help manage the tracking and monitoring of progress over the course of the life of the, of the strategic plan. And so we did all that work in the early summer, it was spring into early summer and back in June, uh, we provided those implementation plans to the staff to really spend the summer and into the fall, kind of working through what those potential strategies and tactics are. So what you have in front of you tonight is really the, the overview of the vision as you all had articulated it. The organizational mission and values, really how the organization, how the staff works together. And then very importantly, those five big rocks, as the mayor mentioned, those key focus areas of enhanced recreation amenities, well-maintained infrastructure, thriving and connected neighborhoods, strong local economy and high performing government. And then there's some of the strategies that are associated with each of those focus areas in the, in the handout that you have. And what I would say is as you all go about your goal setting, um, you pull that strategic plan out. And, uh, the priorities that you set really should be in alignment with this strategic plan, at least those focus areas. If not, it's an opportunity to have some conversation to make sure that, uh, the way in which the organization is expending its resources in terms of time and budget is really in alignment with the vision and those focus areas that have been articulated by the governing body and with informed by the community as well too. So that's just briefly kind of a high level of what transpired over the. So that's just briefly kind of a high level of what transpired over the last year. And I think a great outcome and a great stepping stone really for your work that you're going to be doing over these next three nights in goal setting. So Mayor, with that, I'll turn it back over to you and happy to answer questions or talk about any of the elements in particular.
Thank you, Michelle. And just kind of go off of that, a couple of things and we'll cover this here more in a little bit in detail. So this is kind of meant then, you know, we do quarterly reports, staff does quarterly reports. But it's really just been a amalgamation, amalgamation? Amalgamation, thank you. That wasn't a word today, I promise. To pull together everything they're working on. But we also know that that doesn't really provide a lot of good contextual information to counsel on where are we at with our goals. It's just kind of a here's stuff that's being done. So our plan is to kind of work toward aligning those updates with where are we at with the committed big rock items that would be in this. So that essentially we'll be able to report quarterly, you know, here's where we're at with the major projects that were part of this year's plan of work. So for now, looking at this, it's really just getting your guys' thoughts on the strategies that we have here. And again, here we can, if you are wanting to, we can just move straight into looking at some of the specific tactics we're doing in each of these areas this coming year. Bring Craig back in.
Saw he was gonna say.
Welcome back, Greg. And so then if you guys, unless you have any questions on this at this point, and, and to any questions about the process. About any of the backend work too, we've been doing on the tactics. I know especially Tom, Craig, with you guys, kind of not having been involved in that process with Michelle here. We can also help answer any questions if you have just on how this has kind of all come about. Otherwise, we can just jump into the specific tactics and things we're working on. Everyone's good with that?
Sure.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Craig, did you have anything?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, so just as I keep talking about, there's kind of those five major areas. So kind of like the mayor was talking about, we just kind of wanted to just, you know, reemphasize again, what are the strategies under each one? And then what are those few things we, we think are kind of in the work plan for the next year? So the first one, enhanced recreation amenities, we know that's been a real interest to a lot of people. But you can see the couple of strategies there are advanced priority projects in the Parks Master Plan. By establishing timelines, securing funding and preparing future projects for inclusion in the city C I P. And to develop a phased improvement plan for the city's quality of life facilities. By evaluating current conditions, identifying management priorities, engaging stakeholders and aligning each project with viable funding sources for implementation. And what, so what we did kind of for each strategy now is to kind of show, okay, what, what are those few things? So you can see the first one, and I don't need to read word for word, I understand for everybody. But I just want to kind of show that, that these are the ones that we, that when staff got together with their committees. And I should step back. I'm not sure if everybody knows that for each of those five buckets, there was a staff. I don't want to say committee for each one, that was made up of all the directors and managers. And so they kind of sat down, they talked through, what do they think would be those specific things under each of these strategies? So you can see for rec, it was analyze and recommend to the big project priorities. That you'll see that came out of the master plan. One of the things too is just to update the C I P to align with the adopted plan. Focus on quality of life and develop timelines to implement remaining plan recommendations. An organizational assessment on staffing. And you'll see some of these that we talk about their slides later. There's lots of these things we're going to talk about and we kind of debated, okay, should we go and jump about, go jump and talk about each of them? But then we're like, eh, maybe we should get through them all and then kind of go through them versus, because we know some of these can be pretty big topics. So that's why we kind of noted that there's slides later. There are some things with those five areas that kind of overlap too. So you'll see some of those things where we said, like the assessment on staffing. That's also in the high performing government one too. So there is some overlap naturally. But I know last year there was conversation at these goal settings about our organizational structure. So that's one of the things we thought we would, you know, look into this year too. So I'm just going to kind of keep going unless anybody wants to staff and talk about specific ones or like, ooh, no, I want something different.
So I will just say permission to you guys, we are, we'll just keep rolling and then just feel free to jump in, don't feel rude, stop us, we need to.
China asked, asked question, are you gonna be providing a list for these for the staff committee directors are assigned to each ones?
Um, we sure can, sure can. Yeah, I mean, because I probably can't rattle them off the top of my head. So basically each director was a kind of the lead on each one of them. And then Mike Sapi actually helped out and was kind of the lead on one of the other ones. And so then, like I said, I think it was, right? Like probably every committee had three or four other division managers that helped out. So we can get that for you.
Within each of these, and when we have the final report, you'll be able to see more of these details visually. There's an Excel sheet with each of them that lists the key performance metrics, the K P I's that will go with each of these category areas. So we could start figuring out, hey, what are we looking at to say we're making progress and seeing accomplishments in these? It has kind of staff leads, it has the general timeline, start date, end date, if it's ongoing, says ongoing. But then it does also help. It was a way for staff to say, okay, if we're going to do this this year, here's the resources we're going to need to really act on that. So it also outlines, is it additional staff time? Is it maybe some C I P budget that we'll need? So then that way we can start to kind of look at, to accomplish the things that we've got on this plan. What are those specific items that we're going to need to maybe talk about C I P items? So it was also an internal chance for us to just get those things on paper and kind of get a feeling for, here's all the things we want to do. What do we need a place for it, so?
So for the second one, you can see some of the things that we think are going to be on the work plan for this next year. Big Woods Expansion already in progress, first two point O, which isn't probably surprised anybody and we'll talk about slides later on that too. And then, you know, I think some of these other ones, rec center, sports tourism facility, multi, multi-use athletic fields. Aquatic Center Enhancement Plan, Golf Pro Shop. I mean, obviously those are all things that, those are the things I mentioned earlier about the C I P. That, you know, we're going to be talking about this and what, what is our feeling about those and what are the priorities in there? What might direction we want to go? And I think, you know, just as staff, as we were trying to put some of this together and talk about all those. We also understood that a lot of those are a lot of pieces kind of working together too, you know? And it was kind of like, again, it's like, where are they? My point is they're not necessarily in a certain order, you know, we understand all of those are kind of working together and kind of figuring all that out. So for this one, that focus area, those were kind of the two big strategies and the things we see as the upcoming year. So the next one, well-maintained infrastructure, which actually we heard a little bit and people accomplishments and a lot of things, you know, interested in infrastructure. So you can see the three strategies here, again, fund, you know, through the C I P and sustain well-maintained infrastructure. Developing, implementing sound financial strategies to do the long-term sustainability and maintenance. And maintain and involve proactive maintenance for all city infrastructure. So again, those are kind of the overarching three strategies. And so for each strategy, the first one is, you know, we talked about smart infrastructure design standards and practices. Engagement and collaboration meetings for projects. Review the C I P to ensure all potential projects are included and prioritized accordingly. And identify two additional ways to educate the public on infrastructure projects. I think one of the things that was the hardest part about the well-maintained infrastructure is we felt like a lot of those are ongoing things.
Means we have two more announcements.
It's really closing.
Five minutes and then we are closed.
So, you know, I think it was, but I think just by the nature of the focus area, well-maintained infrastructure. It does kind of imply that it's, it's maintenance, which happens every year. But I think in this, this kind of bucket, we kind of struggled with that whole idea of, well, we're, we're already doing these. But we know how important they are, so we feel like we needed to have them as things we are showing in our work plan.
This is something we went back and forth on, okay, is the strategic plan just action items that need to be done? Or we're saying there's things we're doing well that we want to make sure we keep, should we also list those? So well-maintained infrastructure is one of those. It was really listed the things we're already doing and saying we really want to commit to keeping these in place. And there's a few that were specific, like that bottom one was identifying two additional ways. So it's kind of a push to say, okay, how else can we look at engaging the public? But there are a lot of these ones that we're really just saying, we already have really good practices in place. Let's just put it on paper to say, we'll keep doing some of those.
Um, so for the second strategy, things we talked about in this one was assess and leverage diverse funding sources. Including loss, road use tax, TIF, grants, et cetera. Enterprise fund accounts, so stormwater, sewer, refuse, you know, how are those fees? Are they covering the cost of those operations? Assess financial policies to ensure long-term fiscal responsibility and asset longevity. I think, you know, what again, when we talk about infrastructure and you see things about the C I P. I, I, I just can't emphasize enough how much I feel like the C I P does drive what a lot we do. And that's why to us, it's a really important document because it really does drive what we're doing, what's the priorities? And, and as we know, infrastructure has been a pretty high priority for council currently in the past. So the third one, about proactive maintenance, about prioritize preventive maintenance. Maintain it up-to-date G I S system. Review and update annual infrastructure assessment plans, you know, whether it's pavement management, sanitary sewer, public buildings, alleys. All of that. And obviously, if you have, I know Tyler's here and I know we got engineering staff here too. So if there's any questions on any of those two, feel free to ask if there's anything on that. But otherwise, I'll just keep going unless there's anything else on infrastructure. I feel like I'm just kind of rushing through them, but. So the third one, thriving and connected neighborhoods. Again, strategies related to that, update zoning and subdivision code to promote thriving and connected neighborhoods. Promote neighborhood education engagement and create a world-class pedestrian trail network. That is, gosh, look at that kind of, that is safe, connected and accessible for people of all ages and abilities. So for each of those strategies, the first one, we talked about citywide A D U ordinance. Obviously, completed that revised again for the state law. Parkland dedication standards. Completed here as well, just in the real recent council meetings. Developer Task Force, that's in process. Major overhaul in the College Hill neighborhood zoning. So again, in process. And then you'll see that Stephanie ahead on here about the major overhaul of zoning code and starting in the fall of twenty twenty-six. So even though those first couple, people may think, well, okay, they're already done, so why did we list them? Well, I think just timing wise, they're right now or when we were doing these, they weren't quite done yet. So that's why we had them in there. But and I think just knowing in some of your surveys and stuff you did, these, a lot of these items were things that people mentioned too, that were priorities for them.
Is the fall twenty twenty-six timeline primarily because we're waiting for the end of the developed task force?
I think that, but I think College Hill, also the college, getting the College Hill zoning one done as well.
And we'll, you know, that's going to go out with public review here, but I think at the year, it's so bad to be a very intensive effort now going public with what the regulations are and just the time for that to be able to do both things at once would be really hard.
Makes sense, thanks.
On the second one, neighborhood education engagement, so continue organized events, promoting all departments. So, you know, obviously people know about some of these, National Night Out. We've had the Earth Fair, just various open houses with projects. I think those have been very successful and the community likes those, supporting neighborhoods. Craig's got to get all his books returned. So again, supporting neighborhoods, present event showcasing city on city channels, competitions for funds, spotlight and associations. Research and evaluate neighborhood association resources, providing in other cities. Offer ideas and education on how to do neighborhood events. So I think that's been one that I think we know there's an interest in some of those neighborhood things. And I think the tough part is always, is that for the city to do? How can we encourage maybe the neighborhoods to do it? And what's the city's role in that? So I think those are kind of the hard ones, you know, to kind of figure out, I guess.
So who, who would be responsible for these things? What department does that fall under or staff or what is that like?
Yeah, no, we're figuring that out. Maybe figuring it out, because this is kind of that tough one that we have such, when it kind of covers all departments. You know, when you have engineering doing open house, but you have public safety doing National Night Out, we have Amanda coordinating things. And, you know, there's actually a lot of these things, it's been Amanda who has coordinated some of these things and kind of in her wheelhouse. When we talk about education and communication, obviously in her wheelhouse, but.
So in the one of those up there, it's a little more substantive is that research and evaluate neighborhood association. So some cities do have like a staff person who, their job is neighborhood engagement. They're working with neighborhoods on support, how to set up H O As, neighborhood associations if they'd like to. We don't have that position, but again, where does that get housed? Who's responsible for that? Is that a position we want? So that's something we'll be looking at then in this next fiscal year is doing that research to look at, is that something we should? Maybe have someone currently do, do we gain a new position for that? Because you're right, and that's something we talked about internally is where is that overall this work? Because this was an interesting group when you pulled the stakeholder group together, because you did that public safety, we did that marketing and P R communications, you had planning. And well, so that's something internally with the staffing piece and the organizational hierarchy we look at is. Okay, is that to really emphasize that, do we need that to be maybe structured somewhere?
It's also looking into it, and I don't mean it's to sound negative, but as a person who's tried to organize things at her neighborhood, is it something that? You know, people are busy, right? I mean, how many nights a week are you home? I'm just wondering, it's lovely. I love getting together, but trying to actually like. Is it something that people, the citizens actually want?
They, they may say they want it, but are they going to do it?
And that's why we did not put create a neighborhood association position. Yeah, we definitely know we need to do more.
Yes, as long as that's part of the exploration that maybe in that one.
And one of the things I thought about that is some, you know, now that I've been going to Tucson quite a bit. There, there are demarcated areas, neighborhoods in town. So if we kind of map those somehow by agreement of the public about, you know, this is the open park neighborhood and these are the boundaries. And we fill it with those neighborhoods, then I do think it's a better.
I agree. I think Rob tried to do that. Did Rob try to do that?
Yeah, because I think he had like created certain neighborhoods own.
So that's like that minimum of like just establishing, like for me, it's like, what am I even a part of, you know? Some people don't even know.
Right. Well, then, then it gives an identity to the neighborhood that I think then, then could, you know, it's like North Cedar, they're probably the more, most robust.
But the thing about, speaking of North Cedar, they are, there's really four, three or four different neighborhood associations in North Cedar. Cottage Row really isn't involved, the North Cedar Neighborhood Association, yeah. Pass Dunkerton Road isn't really involved, the people around the lake aren't really involved. And but they each have their own groups too, so.
And I think something that I heard from working with, like doing Saturday and seriously, is a lot of people just don't know about it. And so, you know, it's kind of like, I wonder how much of it is just like needing to access that information in some way by not having those areas established. It's like you don't even know where to look to find out if something like that's happening in your neighborhood.
Which is part of the vision I see for whatever the revamped maintenance of Channel fifteen could be as far as an information source. For those types of events, just one way. I mean, I was, you know, we also have our website and currents.
Yeah, which I think again, just speaks to the, what does this look like for us then?
Well, as an example, it's Michelle Peasley who goes to the North Cedar Neighborhood Association meeting. Which I don't think any real reason, it's not like she's specifically an expert on North Cedar, it's just.
Right, because she lives two blocks away from me. And Karen goes to College Hill, so. Um, the third one about pedestrian trail network, world-class network. So integrate new trail segments into new development. Continue sidewalk infill programs, prioritizing connections to the school. Um, continue sidewalk infill programs, prioritizing connections to the school parks or other amenities. Um, propose parks in the CIP to address trail gaps in parks master plan. Um, and you'll see, we kind of have a few listed there that you'll see on the CIP. Um, evaluate uh trail amenities and develop overall plan for amenity um implementation. Um, so that's thriving, connected neighborhoods, um strong local economy. So um a few there about expanding business attraction and expansion. Um, expand our focus on local business support and newer business attraction, develop ready or development-ready community. Um streamline our city requirements and processes to support the growth for our local businesses and industry. Um, position Cedar Falls as a local location of choice for new industrial, commercial, residential development. And support our commercial um districts, partner with our existing business districts, implement intentional place-based strategies, support their continued growth. Um, so I think for those is the first one is about um business attraction expansion. So update select Cedar Falls website, um grow retention, expansion calls to at least twenty-five a year with Grow Cedar Valley. Um, review commercial and industrial incentives and update the housing needs assessment. Um, I think the second one is, is about development-ready community, um the developer task force. So again, already underway, um major overhaul zoning code, talked about that. Um, perform a webpage refresh, um handbook, helping new business owners more easily navigate city processes. Um, I think that, has that been something that's kind of been talked about in the developer task force too, is about some of that handbook on some things?
Kind of, we talked about.
Okay, I couldn't remember if that had come up there or not, but. Um, and review the city's organizational structure, um considering uh staff liaison for small business seeking guidance. So again, we'll talk about that under high performing government as well.
From the webpage refresh, the select Cedar Falls website is the economic development marketing website. So it's separate from the city's website and it just kind of needs an update. Um, it was created how many years ago? Just said, yeah, I wasn't there, but.
I know, I don't. And that's, I would say from two thousand seventeen, because wasn't that all after Obama coming to C F U with.
Oh, yeah.
Stephanie, yeah, yeah.
And so that page is more of a marketing tool for us for external business attraction. And then this one for the webpage refresh is right now, if you go on the city website, like as a developer, it is really hard to find. There's just so much on our website, it's hard to really just find what you need. And so this would be trying to make more of an easy, accessible place for developers and home builders looking to just figure out, okay, whether the requirements, codes. And it goes with that handbook of just having an easy accessible handbook of, if you're doing this type of development, here's who the contacts. And I know from our code enforcement team, like that's something they would love for those people to have so that they know where the contacts, who at what stage before they. Build something and then have to come be all that in fact.
Um, and then for the third strategy under here is um start regular meetings with college partnership. Um, you just heard mentioned about how Karen goes to those, but I'm just for everyone's benefit, starting this July. Um, staff is met with um a couple of the business actually um owners down there and we have monthly meetings. And every month, it just kind of depends on the topic. So we've had um Chase came, um I always just kind of ask Ryan and Kyle, hey, what do you want for your topic next meeting? And then they'll know who to invite. So Chase has come, talked about the streetscape, obviously they have interest of that, that's coming up here in the next few years. Um, Jamie came and Stephanie came to talk about code enforcement up on the hill, we've had that topic. Um, they, I think we had some park staff come one time to just talk about um the trees and could get, get different types of trees and just some of the vegetation there. And so it just kind of depends, but I think they've been going well and it's just nice to kind of keep the communication, I guess, open with them. And again, I think it's, it really sparked a little bit about that streetscape coming and how can we get their input from the start too? Um, major overhaul, the College Hill neighborhood um zoning, just talked about that, that that's. In process and kind of getting to the real public part of that, um partner with um Community Main Street and city taking more active role in growth. Um, you will see that um later on, when we talk about requests from different um areas, Community Main Street had a list of what they sent. I think they emailed it out to all of you as well. Um, and you did see some of that in there too, about just kind of how can we work together to um, you know, actively um. Homework on growth, so and review um potential for continued growth and other key commercial corridors. I think that, and the mayor can maybe speak more to this, you know, I think when we talked about this group and the strong local economy. As we think a lot of times about how can we get those new businesses and new areas, but we also wanted to make sure we're supporting. Our current businesses as well, and so they feel like they're supported as well. Um, and then we're just moving on to the last one, high performing government. So these were the four that came up with strengthening community confidence and city government through consistent follow-through and open inclusive communication. Create a high-performing organizational culture through increased employee engagement, recognition and growth opportunities. Um, increase the efficiency and effectiveness of city services and maintain financial stability. So under each of those, um, some of the things we came up with on the first one, when we talk about community confidence, um channel fifteen revamp. Again, we'll talk about that later as people saw the outline. So I think we all see that as, you know, maybe some new opportunities there, what can we do? Um, connect uh goals and strategies to council agenda items and other reports. Um, I think it was maybe helpful if we're going to have a strategic plan. Then how do we know when we're doing things on council? Does that fit in with our strategic plan? So um I think that's one of the things and, and some of us, some staff can remember, we used to do that kind of with the goal setting. We used to put in our cover memos for council items, like this relates to to be on the goal document. And I think it just kind of gradually kind of went away or whatever, but I think this is just kind of saying, maybe doing something like that. Again, and tie it back to the strategic plan. Um, and establish an annual community satisfaction survey. I think that was initiative the mayor brought or talked about last year and we did put that in the budget for the current year we're in. Um, so.
I think we're planning for that January to start.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so, yeah.
And that's uh just for Tom and Craig, that is, there's a standard uh, it's called the National Community Survey. There's standard format that's benchmarked against other communities that just, it's usually sent to a random sampling of the residents. For the pretty large sizing of them. And then it just asks questions of, you know, how do you feel about this service, quality with this service? But then it helps you kind of rank and get an understanding of, are residents really happy with this compared to residents in other communities? And it gives you a sense of where there may be areas we can improve on and where do we know people really value what's being offered? Like I'll just say, recent, we sent the survey right now and asked, how do you think we're doing with the streets? I think there'd be a lot of, oh yes, so.
I have a question, Mayor.
Um.
Yeah. We've done similar things, uh studies like this for other things. What's the, what's the participation rate? Do we get a good return on, on doing the survey things or not, do you think?
Uh, and this one's a little different because this is directly, if I understand the few companies that do it, because it is a standardized model. This is directly mailed to a random sampling of residents and then they. It is ensuring you get a pretty significant sample size so that you know. You're genuinely, genuinely reaching a representative sample of the community.
I can also tell you, Craig, it depends on the topic, parking survey, lots of responses, lots of responses on that. I feel like we've done Park Master Plan or some of them, I think generally consultants usually will say, oh, you guys. You guys had a good amount of feedback, I, I feel like for a lot of those, but I think sometimes it depends on the topic.
I feel like it depends how many come out and it grow, right?
Sure.
We had a, we had a cluster this year, this year, you know, I was doing them, but trying to get my husband to. He was just overwhelmed by.
He's not a survey.
Surveys, because I think maybe at Parks Master Plan surveys, that's one you're talking about, kind of the same time.
And parking.
Something that Michelle had said, uh, consultant, was that basically like? If you have a low number, it's kind of okay, because that means people are generally happy. That if people were unhappy, you would have way more responses.
And we used. And we used to do a survey, like it wasn't the standardized survey, but.
Right, yes, we have done a citizen survey before and I've said we did it a couple of times maybe, but there's other communities, they. They do them regularly, I mean, they're pretty um.
Marion.
Yeah, Marion's one of them.
Marion's one that they do, it's the same standardized survey and they do a really good job of not just doing the survey, but they really reference it to. Here's why we invested in improving this thing, because it was something we've seen.
I still really think we should do more surveys that, you know, result in random drawings for winners to, you know, deuce. Like, you know, dunk take the mayor.
It's a great idea, so you really open to offering.
You and a duck take.
Okay, should we move on from that one here? You want to move on after hearing duck take?
Yeah, let's see what's.
Um, uh, so just thinking about um organizational culture. Implement pay and benefit results from our pay plan study, you'll hear more about that later. Um, but also improve new employee orientation, including reinforcing organizational values and goals. You'll see on your brochure, you'll see that there was the organizational values that are listed on there. And I think when you guys had your second session, I want to say, I believe the consultant kind of mentioned when they had asked staff. What the, you know, I think what the main values were and kind of, we talked about that a little bit at that session, so they're on there. And so one of the things I know that's on Bailey's um radar in H R is, after we get this adopted, that we kind of just talk about that maybe. When a new employee starts, we would reinforce what those organizational values are, so they know when they start. Um, review the city's organizational structure, again, I know that was talked about last year. Um, I will tell you, I think as the mayor and I have had some conversations about that, I think one, we feel like. Probably want to wait till we get a new city administrator on board, you probably want to, you know, for you to a major uh org chart or organizational structure. Probably want to get our new one here, but also um, we talked about, also definitely want to look at it holistically, not just, hey, we think we need this. This department or, you know, that, okay, let's just, when we have the moment, maybe we should talk about it all and, and where we're at. Um, and then continue the biannual employee survey, so been doing those every other year, I think we've done two so far. So um fiscal year twenty-seven will be the year that we would be up again to do one. So we'll have that, those funds in the budget too, if we want to continue to do those.
Do we do that in the fall?
Yeah, usually I feel like it's September or October, I feel like they go out, so, yes.
So I know that we kind of touched on this one, we had my like one-on-three session. Uh, you know, like wanting staff to like feel more appreciated by council, just because obviously like everything that we do is a result of staff work. And like we got those cards, the like nice like hand-drawn little cards, but then I feel like we didn't really, but we. We still don't really like hear anything, like when can we use those? Like if people are retiring or someone like gets a promotion or whatever, like I understand that. There is a level of separation and that's kind of necessary. But like just to have some information so that we could like send a little like appreciation, like that kind of thing, I think would be beneficial. It just like help build our connection with staff. So that's something that I think maybe would fit into this as well. I don't know, that's just my feeling on it, uh, maybe everyone else is like, yuck.
Um, no, I think that's, right Hannah, I can also tell you, I don't know if everyone knows, but we do have an employee resource group at the city who um. I don't know, maybe twelve or fifteen on it now, it's maybe a little bigger for a while, but um. There are also ones who, they're also just trying to think of ideas of how could they do more? Um, interdepartment activities too, so you know, when we know when a lot of our departments are in their own location, it is tough to. You know, how do you have a potluck over the whole city? That's a little tough, you know? I mean, we might have one at City Hall or Public Safety might have one, but I know they're just trying to kind of also, how can they um? Just kind of, I think for employees, maybe they feel a little more connected too if. But that's some of the logistic challenges, you know, when you have shift workers at um public safety, but no, I do appreciate that. And I think what's hard is kind of what um Gil said too, is we know for all of us, there's so many of those little things every day, right? That everybody's doing that we all just take for granted, right? Like that's what they're supposed to do, that's, you know, and. And you're right, we probably don't all do enough Java, kind of stepping back and like, oh, yeah, we should probably thank them for that, so. Um.
That's kind of old school.
Yeah.
You know, just send a thank you card for, for a good meeting. Appreciate your time.
So.
That was an old school. A new age old school.
That's something. Um, third one was just um, so implement E R P system to increase timekeeping efficiency, budget transparency and applicant tracking. Um, if you've been in the finance area lately, um, but the stress level's been pretty high, because we just went live uh December first with our financial system. So it's been a little high, high stress level. There was given um some staff a little guff today, um, but no, so Lisa, if you see Lisa, like, yeah, but I don't. Um, so we're doing that, but we do, obviously it's like anything, it's new system, it's changed, lots of bugs to work through, but obviously the whole point is. You know, we hope to make things more efficient and then we'll go live with our new payroll system, April first, so. Um, perform a webpage refresh, just kind of talked about that, um publish a simplified report of the five-year C I P. If anybody's been browsing on our website, you may have seen a C I P brochure, we did this last year. Um, Grace was one who helped with that, we're just trying to kind of think of, you know, we know we have that big C I P book and there's lots of projects in there. Cause there any way we kind of get that. Um, we have done something uh with that, but just kind of want to prove it again for this year and establish an A I use policy and select and implement A I based tools.
I was interested when I read that one, uh increase the efficiency and effectiveness of city services, which implied we were ineffective and.
True, yeah.
And I just thought, well, where's the downfall? So this helps explain that.
Okay, or do you think, because I think all about tonight is also getting kind of, I think what Mary each about earlier, kind of the blessing of these strategy worries. Right, and so just like that, Gil, if you feel like that strategy needs to be worded just a little bit different, I think we're also open.
And we maintain.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we can, when we get to those slides, we can, we can talk more in depth.
Well, where might, we might go right now, so if you feel like.
Yeah, I think it, 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 it puts a, it's a negative.
Okay.
Uh, look to, it's like, well, okay, something really not working right here, so how can we be efficient? How can we be effective? Well, you're already efficient, you're already effective, but. Like either maintain it or.
Like could throw continually on the front of that, so continually improve.
Yeah.
Impression the city, so it's more of a continuous improvement thing now that we're not good, so we need to improve. Good.
Anything that we're.
Not good?
No, no, continually improve.
Yeah, continually improve.
Okay, okay, all right. Um.
The A I piece, um, and we, that's something that staff did an internal task force to review multiple different tools that we can use either for. And one thing that's come up a lot is there's so much information on the website and our web portal, how do we make that more contextually searchable? Um, that might be something A I tools can help with, we did just approve paying for a new internal staff tool that will help with. I think it was for like reviewing uh zoning code event or code, did we approve the funding for that? I remember what was that the uh? I think it was ago.
Yeah, 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 we're moving ahead with the tool, yeah, the government, it's like a chat G P T, but it had, I was government, yeah.
So we've got a few tools we've been reviewing for internal land community use on the website.
Um, and then lastly, maintain financial stability, again, I know also a couple of things, our, a couple of you mentioned that kind of at the beginning. Um, so again, about our new budgeting software, um maintain financial policies and fund balances that are consistent with a triple A bond rating. As you know, we'll spend lots of time talking about financial policies here and goal setting, um. Continue to receive high marks in financial reporting, uh one thing I did want to say about the triple A bond rating is I think we all know. That's going to get tough to maintain when we start issuing a bunch of that for our water treatment facility, because that will be one of their criteria. But so that's why for us, we didn't write maintain triple A bond rating. We wrote maintain the policies and fund balances that are consistent with a triple A, because those are things we can do. You know, issuing that and doing a project we know we need to do, we know that's going to be a criteria that will hurt us, but we feel like it's important to at least do the other parts. Of um, how can we at least, you know, be consistent with that?
And again, a reminder, you say the word hurt us, we have the best possible, so it's like going from an eight hundred fifty credit score to, okay, we might drop to an eight hundred thirty. But, but when you're at the top, it's easy to be like, oh, we're going to drop.
Um, and then, so I think, so again, those are the five areas, those are just for each one, the few things that we thought were things that we could kind of accomplish and be our work plan for the next year. So I think at this point, it is kind of what's the next steps and so. And so I think the mayor mentioned about a final draft. We would do something of that. Um, bring it forward for council adoption. We originally thought maybe January when we're doing goals. I don't know if we still feel like that's when we might need that, but. Um, and then he mentioned about it kind of replacing the quarterly reports. One of the things maybe we just wanted a little bit of direction on is. We had kind of talked about, you know, is there something we would do from a quarterly update standpoint, but maybe twice a year come and actually give a presentation? I think we felt like quarterly sounds great, but we feel like from a presentation standpoint. You're all gonna be like, weren't you just here like last month? I mean, you know, we know quarters come around quickly, so if we felt like that was um. I think if you were kind of okay with that, like trying to figure out what's something we can provide you quarterly, but. Maybe only present a couple of times a year, if that seems acceptable.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, we are see the the. I think having a an oral presentation of some kind, just for the public, probably doesn't pay a lot of attention right back, it's. Seemingly not, uh, so I think that would be helpful.
You know, just, it's a great idea, less is more kind of thing. You'll get more out of it with less. Um, what I wanna say, um, less often reports, one that's more concise, that is presented in person, that sounds. Sounds uh, sounds like a better way to do it than just a report.
And when do we do the um, like in the first budget amendment in a year?
Um, so we have to have those done by May thirty first, so usually come, see him like the first meeting in May would be budget amendment time usually.
Uh, then this too, if we gave like middle of the year, it give a good indicator of here's maybe projects that. We moved up, here's projects that went back type of thing. Um, so I think the goal would be probably then when we bring the goal setting report forward. We'll probably try to tie that up with bringing the final version of the strategic plan. So kind of at the same time, we're saying. Here's the strategic plan we're moving forward with, here's this year's goals, everything within that. And so that way we're kind of approving this year's plan of work along with here's the strategic plan that backs that.
So I think if we felt like those were the, if everyone's comfortable with those five areas that you had already talked about yours, if those strategies sound. Like, or if there was, but we also wanna make sure there wasn't something we missed. If there was something you're like, I didn't see this on there, there was anything.
I think the big thing, if there are any big rocks that you feel like we didn't cover that we're planning to get to this next year. Of course, knowing there's always little projects and things here and there that we, that we're kind of side of that strategic plan, which some of them. High level, are there any big rocks that we aren't really looking to get to this year that you feel we're missing on?
The only thing that I could think of is roundabout at Green Hill and Prairie Parkway. Going back to construction.
Well, that'll segue us shortly right into our infrastructure presentation. Uh, so yeah, the next part, actually perfect time, will be kind of Chase running through the schedule projects, uh, when we get to them. And and that'll be kind of part of why we were talking about that now, so we can decide priority of which things. We've got the scheduled plan for which roads we plan to get to and which years. So.
There is thinking, so we're an hour and a half in. We're gonna switch to Chase talking, maybe a good time to just take a five minute.
Yeah.
Break or ten minute or whatever you're thinking, me, whatever.
Is, I need more than five or is five enough?
All right, I think I think we're gonna go ahead and get started, so. Oh, we lose. So I'm gonna cover a lot of the infrastructure projects that you uh, see up on the screen here. Uh, I'd say a lot of them are competing for the same funding sources. I have some street projects, some some sewer projects up there. And then there's some miscellaneous ones that we'll cover as well. I think we'll go ahead and get started. So we have a five-year pavement management program and that's administered to the engineering department. So each year, there's staff members that go out and drive all of the city streets and rate them. And we actually prioritize them based on their deterioration and we implement that. Onto our GIS system, so we can turn on a layer and we can see uh what streets are in need of repair and kind of how soon. And those types of things. So for a reminder, uh, HMA means uh asphalt surface, PCC is concrete. So some of the planned reconstruction for next year, Oakland Avenue, picturesque drive, I'll talk about those a little bit later, but those are located in the North Cedar Heights area. Eric Road, uh, West Twelve Street, I'll have some slides on that as well a little bit later. See all the planned restoration streets. Restoration is uh more or less maintenance, a lot of it, it will be uh asphalt overlays. Asphalt overlay on. It says mill and overlay, it's a, it's an existing asphalt street today. We'll mill off the old asphalt, put down some new asphalt. So you can see down there as well, uh, Gil might be interested. We'll begin Lincoln Street.
And Eighteenth Street.
And yeah, Eighteenth Street west of Hudson Road. Yep, that's been a concern.
And we've already talked about twelve, but we'll, I'll wait till the slide.
Yep. So again, uh, next year's pretty set. We're already into design. Uh, we're, we're looking to let the project early calendar year next year. Uh, for future years, twenty seven and beyond, uh, those are more or less uh living documents, so. After this winter, there might be a street that was planned in twenty twenty nine that has to be moved up to twenty twenty seven, just due to what happened over. Um, this previous winter, so. Just keep in mind, it's a living document, because sometimes an individual might hear that. Uh, hey, when is Madison Street planned? And then we tell them twenty twenty eight and then two years from now, it's planned in twenty thirty. Well, depending on the budget bids, things like that, uh, how the street's looking, it might move later or move up sooner. Uh, so twenty twenty seven continuing in North Cedar Heights area with uh Cherry Lane. And then we'll have Hawthorne Drive, Madison Street and McLean. Then the long list of uh restoration projects there.
Hey, Chase.
Yep.
Uh, with Cherry Lane, we're getting pretty close to done, and aren't we?
Or so. There'll be one more uh, one more year of West Ridgewood things.
Okay.
And I'll go into the phasing of that. So twenty twenty eight, uh Edwards, West Ridgewood, Carrollton Drive. Uh, and then planned restoration streets. Feel free to ask about any of them. I'm not gonna go through the limits at all, just wanted you to see kind of the ongoing list. We always say five-year pavement management plan, we could have a plan for ten. Uh, we have slots all the way out to eight, nine, ten years. I was just waiting to move into the five-year program.
The streets and sidewalks are separate. Correct, okay.
So on reconstruction streets, normally, the only sidewalk that gets replaced would be the panels for the water services, so there'll be a couple panels at each property. Sidewalk infills that are programmed in the CIP, if we're doing. The street in the same location as where the sidewalk infill is, it's a great time to partner with projects together. We recon the street, put in the sidewalk infill.
Well, I, I don't get it up that way as much as I used to, but is Dallas Drive, is that? Infill or is that um, in on the list?
Uh, I would have to look at that section.
Cause we talked about it quite a bit. Decided not to fill the sidewalk here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, adjacent to Dallas.
I think this one's right behind Gary.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so, we can take a look at that.
Yeah.
Then twenty twenty nine, continuing on with uh Olive, section of state near Eighteenth Street there, Terrace Drive. Uh, Nordic Drive is in the industrial park and then our final phase of Lincoln Street. Some of them might look like, hey, that's a short list, but. When you look at Olive, that's three blocks, State Street's two blocks. Um, it gets really expensive for a block or reconstruction. We're talking a half a million to seven hundred thousand, depending on the. The utility infrastructure that we place in.
Is there, is there a plan from first to tenth or Walnut?
Uh, I would have to look at our, our plan. There's nothing in the five-year plan regarding that, but.
Yeah, without looking too far ahead, Chase, do you have some, a slide that you talked about with the. The section Eric wrote up to Hudson from Battle Arc, you have something in here. I know it was on your list for next year. Is that, you talking about that section that's kind of curved that goes into Hudson? We gotta straighten it out?
Uh, no.
That would have been the great opportunity to straighten that. That is a best.
All right there at the end of it.
Yeah, we could get the writer love and get the stoplight, which would make things much better, but. Into Hudson Road there, if you've got any parking on that street, it's a nightmare, sure, that interception.
Take a closer look, I would be guessing, I need some right away, um, regarding that, but I just know that the panels are. Yeah, very bad shape, they're in lane section there.
Great, thanks.
Twenty twenty nine, so there's twenty thirty, um, Barnett Drive, College Street, uh Olive Street again. And some planned restoration, um, and Cedar Heights Drive, uh, and then there's a, actually another phase of Lincoln Street showing. So as part of the uh pavement management plan, we also have included streets in the, the North Cedar Heights area. Uh, this began, I would say, in twenty twenty three. Um, we came up with kind of a five-year program out in this area. Um, phase one began in twenty three, I think it was finished in twenty twenty four. Uh, phase two began in twenty twenty four and continued through twenty five. Uh, we actually took a year off from bidding a project last year, just because the, the contractors having trouble keeping up. It's a. Can ask our staff as well, it's here, I mean, this is probably one of the. Most controversial or in complex projects I've been a part of here. I've been through University Avenue. And all that, it's just, there, there's no space out here. The existing roads are twelve feet wide, they're, they're. The new roadways are eighteen feet wide. A lot of the private landscaping stuff was out in the right of way. It's just, it's, it's a mess out there, so it's, it's difficult for the contractor, it's difficult for the residents and we're trying to. To, to make it all work. Um, I know previous uh staff members from way before my time. Completely avoided this area because they knew how big a nightmare it was gonna be. Unfortunately, I was uh, filling up and taking on and we are where we are, so we do have a few more years left in this. Uh, we're planning to bid phase three, which is, like I said, uh, um, Oakland Avenue and Picture Ask, it's actually shown kind of in the brown there. And then phases four and five remain, which will be uh that Cherry Lane section and Greenwood in blue. And then we'll finish our way out with the green. We started way in the back and we're working our way out towards uh Rainbow Grand.
As the council member by the force of word, I agree with Chase.
It is very difficult, and, but I do wanna thank you, Jason, and chicken and other people in the department for being really responsive. To get questions answered, and I think that's helped a lot. Not always the answer that people wanna hear, but they're hearing from us, so anyway, thank you.
So that's a, that's also another reason why we see some of those uh next few years in the five-year pavement management plan, you might see. Lower numbers of streets. So a lot of these infrastructure projects, streets related, are funded by our uh option tax program, which gen, what is it, six point five or seven million we generate per year. Um, but about two million dollars is spent out in this area every year, so out of the seven, we're taking two million off right away, cuz it's going. Back out here. And then uh with the remaining streets, we don't wanna use up the remaining five million. We wanna hold some back for some of the larger projects like Main Street or Union Road, some of those larger infrastructure projects that are coming in the next five years.
And just to preface a conversation we'll have later, so I know, I think I've talked pretty much to everyone individually about looking at local office sales tax for. Parts of culture and recreation, so if, that's why that is an important conversation for us to have, because right now, all that money does go the roads. And we've got, thankfully, so we've got very great roads. But so I wanted to preface that now, just so we're, whereas we're talking through this, right now, this whole schedule is based on, I believe, the current. Hundred percent allocation local office sales tax, so anything we shift out will mean just kind of pushing that schedule of roads out. Not saying that's, not, not that we shouldn't do it, but I just want us to be aware that it's not like it's just free money that we can shift around. But I do know there's a demand on that arts, culture, recreation side, the quality of life, arts master plan. But I wanted to mention it now, cuz I wanna be fair to our road projects, make sure we know there's always something we're missing out on by shifting those ones. And so then next after this, we'll jump to recreation, so just, just keep in mind, here's these projects and then we'll try to balance out what we wanna do on a recreation side.
So uh, the colors here is the staging plan for next year, obviously, we'll work at the very end on picturesque and work our way out. Throughout the year, we do tend to typically plan to have it completed in a year, um, see how that goes. Sometimes they'll roll into the next year. Um, this goes for phase two as well. There's some landscaping improvements in phase two that is not yet completed. But phase three also has landscaping improvements, meaning I'm gonna say this entrance sign, um, that is kind of a picture of it right there. It's got the historic logo that's been out there previously, so uh there'll be two uh locations in which that sign. Is at the entrance to those streets in the back there. West Twelve Street, um. So the color shown here is uh the sections that were reconstructed uh related to the years that they were done, so if you start over by Hudson Road. Um, near Fairview Cemetery, it's done in twenty eighteen, then twenty twenty was through Walnut Street uh to Tremont. And actually in twenty twenty two, I believe it's programmed to do that red section and we actually had to move it back due to Main Street. Uh, we couldn't have both streets under construction at the same time. Um, so now that we're done with Main Street, wanna come back and finish up Twelve Street.
So Hannah, the. Just the question I asked by Chase was, I talked to some folks at Bancroft's. And there was discussion of maybe widening it towards them as customers come and go. Uh, to uh give them a little, little ease and get in and out of their cars and. I don't know how much of a engineering or a drawing change, or is this what you have, Chase?
Uh, I could talk a little bit about that. Um, so the limits, like I said, are Tremont to Washington, basically where the Main Street reconstruction. Uh, ended, um, planned for next year, the existing roadway width is thirty five feet wide. It has two twelve and a half foot lanes and a ten foot parking lane on the south side. What we've been discussing over the last couple of years. We've had some comments about speed on Twelve Street, obviously at Walnut is stop controlled in college. But there's two longer segments that uh. We would like to maybe implement some traffic calming elements and what we're proposing in the section of Twelve Street would be. Bump outs on the south side of the road. It wouldn't be eliminating the parking lane, but at the intersections, they would be bumped out to try to shrink the corridor down and make it feel a little tighter. And actually, it would, it would shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians, so you don't have to walk across the parking lane. And then, so that is something we're talking about doing and it would look something similar to this. The dotted line would delineate the parking lane and then when you get to um Tremont Franklin, the intersections would be bumped out. It would also in turn, on specific streets, it would bump out uh on that north-south street like Franklin. It would also be bumped out around the corner, depending on if there's existing parking on that street or not. Like you can see on Washington Street. It would only be bumped out on the west side of the road, just due to maintaining both lanes of traffic for that direction, so. Uh, I would like some, um, maybe some consensus or direction on. Whether you not, you want the corridor rebuilt as is, or would you like to incorporate some traffic cone? Like bump outs, and our thoughts with this is, is if it works well, we plan on doing a study maybe a year after opening it. And if speeds have reduced, we can go back and do some spot treatments. In this twenty eighteen section, this longer stretch, maybe near Catherine, to try to help with that as well. Obviously, there's not so much of a problem in between Walnut and, and College, because it's such a short distance and they have to stop anyway.
Oh, we'd have to ask the lady that lives at.
Yeah, Twelve and College.
I would say it's like a drag strip right between there. It's like, how fast can I get to that stop sign? But I mean, I don't think it's gonna make that much of a difference, I mean, i- in terms of in that exact space, but I think this is a really good idea. I'm very excited about it.
Yeah, I like this too, and I don't know if there, again, I'm, I'm just, I just threw the idea out. When we, when I was having that conversation with those folks, it's like, well, even a foot would make a difference. I, I have parked on Twelve, Twelve in front of my house. And it's kind of, kind of scary getting.
Yeah, getting.
Getting out of the car, um, as the traffic goes buzzing by, so you, you watch it at, in front of Bancroft's. There's a, not a whole lot of.
So I'm not saying it's, it's impossible. So I'm not saying it's it's impossible. Everything's possible, but there is a lot of infrastructure. We looked at after I spoke with you. There's a there's a gas main behind the. The South Curd Line. Actually, the further you get out, there might be some stairs impacted at Bancroft's, but our thoughts with that would be. You can have as narrow as a ten-foot lane, as instead of having two twelve and a half foot lanes, maybe we'll have two eleven and a half foot lanes. And we'll stripe the parking lane at twelve feet or eleven and a half, whatever that is to to give them the feel that it's. We're not actually widening the pavement, but give them the feel that there's more space there by just the striking.
Right. Yeah, so we use the example, I feel like I put the ballards on the little bike path on top main. It does make you just naturally stay further over when you visibly see.
That's true.
So I do think even just having the bump outs and maybe a line.
Farther out to. I don't think we can get the full door swing of a car sitting there. So that's.
But I do think like because of where they are as people, like if they're coming around the corner, it's like just that. You know, if you're getting right out of the car there, it's like you obviously as a pedestrian have to be looking, but if people aren't paying attention, it can be a kind of. That's like, you know, that's where our house is and that's where I park sometimes, so.
I think this goes a long way though toward.
Yeah. Even the pedestrian crossing concerns, because now we shorten that.
That's worth it just for that.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just looking at this map. So only parking on the south side beyond that dotted line. Is that what you're proposing?
There there's existing parking today. I just wanted to represent that everything south of the dotted line is is the parking lane. We might lose a little bit of parking. A lot of those intersections are no parking from here to corner, but you understand the radius of the bump out might may eliminate the stall or something. There.
Yeah.
Thanks. It sounded like it sounded like a good good plan.
Where along there is it ever bold? I don't think that's going to be a problem at all.
So everyone's okay to move forward with the final design of bump outs.
Really quick, I just want to let everyone know you and I women's volleyball won against Utah in the fifth match. It was really close. But they won. So they hope we go into the next round of the NCAA tournament. Very nice.
They've had a lot of five set.
But they won.
Kind of worth mentioning, you know, there's a bunch of engineers here in the room, but like.
That's what that's worth mentioning?
Well, no, a bunch of smart engineers, but Hannah's observations are kind of a good example why stop signs are a good. Sometimes people think it's supposed to be put in a stop sign and that's a perfect example why they don't.
Make up the time.
She witnesses it daily.
All the time.
I might have seen that coming from the high school to a beginning here just recently.
Well, and I also, I mean, I think this is great and especially if we're making the conscious decision to observe the changes. So that way, if this is successful, then we can we can implement it on more than just Twelfth Street.
Yep.
Go into my yard.
Couple feet on your lot there and appraisal's coming up next year.
And we're gonna zone a commercial.
Update with West Twenty Second Street. So you're all aware of West Twenty Third Street's currently under construction. First year's completed. Finish it up next spring with that last segment on twenty third. We're hoping to move into Twenty Second Street as well. That'll be from College Street to Campus. Current width of. Twenty Second Street is very narrow. It's twenty five feet wide. It makes a lot of things difficult. Obviously, the parking's difficult on the corridor and maintaining two lanes of traffic, garbage collection when people are parked on the corridor, those types of things. So we are proposing to widen the roadway from twenty five to twenty nine. This would actually allow for. Prolonged parking. It still will only be one-sided parking, but it will basically be for any time. Right now, it's basically. Specific times and it's calendar day parking on the corner, but imagine an eight-foot car on a on a twenty-five-foot roadway. When we say twenty-five, it's actually twenty-four feet wide because you measure back to back a curb. So if it's twenty-four feet wide and you take off eight feet, you're down to sixteen feet, you can't hardly maintain two lanes of traffic. So we are proposing to go to twenty-nine. The staging of the project for next year would be, we'd start with the green and the red, hoping to get that completed in twenty twenty-six. The blue would actually wait till twenty twenty-seven. That'd be down by the Campus Street, the western end of the project. We have spoke with College Hill. They're supportive of the project and the widening of the roadway. We had public information meeting, I think maybe three people showed up, two people showed up. They were supportive of the project as well, so.
None of the people that live there will live there with Gids Project, so.
Yeah, I should say the landlord.
Landing gets excited about that project because it does get rid of a couple driveways, such as rental paving. A lot of the parking's in the back of the alleys, but then those driveways stayed. And we worked to get it grass established a couple, but then people drive over it because there's a curb cut there, so it'll help the couple.
We were, we were asked at the public information meeting if we were going to buy. These properties as part of the widening.
The valid question.
Hey, if you don't ask.
One of them was mine.
Update on Highway fifty-seven and Union Road. Most of you know, a couple of years ago, we had an accident again there. Kind of stemmed another discussion with the DOT. Historically, it hasn't gone very far, but. We actually got some movement out of them this last time and got it programmed in their plan and and kind of partnered with them on on funding this project. So we are currently still in design. I think final plans have been submitted. We're actually going to to a letting here in January. It'll be constructed hopefully in one season. Most of it will remain open. I'll go into that here in the in the next slide. But you can kind of see how the funding is split there in the bottom of the slide. We did receive a traffic safety improvement grant of five hundred thousand. And then the DOT and the city split. The reason there's a difference there is because we had additional water main extension and there's a. Entrance sign. What better time to incorporate a new entrance sign location? And actually, I'll have some future slides on the entrance signs, but. That's kind of the rendering of it down there at the bottom of the slide and the proposed location. Actually, the city limit line is right on the edge of the photo where it's cut off. So it's pretty much on the city limit line.
And it doesn't look good to you?
It looks so. Oh, I've seen this a lot of times.
Just quick staging plan. I know a lot of the concerns with this intersection is maintaining emergency access and or east-west movement. Down Highway fifty-seven. We're going to build it in a couple of different phases. The east-west traffic will always remain open as well as the north-south traffic. The purple is a temporary roadway that will build to the north. We want to be able to serve, I think the fire district goes out there, correct, Craig? So we want to be able to have emergency access out there. The only section that will be closed for a portion of the project will be south of this intersection. Basically, from First and Union down to, I believe it's Wingwood. Yeah, that section will be closed for a portion, but all other movements will be able to take place. Highway fifty-eight, Green Hill Road. Just money, Craig.
The racetrack design.
This was another project that we've been trying to get on the DOT's program for quite some time and then we did here a couple of years ago. Some of the updates regarding this, it's still tentatively planned for twenty twenty-eight. I can tell you, there's some funding challenges with this project, so I'm anticipating that it gets pushed till. Twenty thirty is my, what I'm anticipating, but I have not heard that from the DOT yet. It was a fifty-six million dollar project in twenty twenty-three. The alternatives showed. A for fifty-six million that it would be in the opposite direction. Highway fifty-eight would be over Green Hill Road. At that time, we've heard from a lot of comments from the public and our professional opinion would be to build it. Similar to Viking and fifty-eight. A lot of the noise dampening would take place. If fifty-eight would go under and you'd have walls. If fifty-eight was higher, it would be similar to the section down by. The end, that's where where the sound projected out into the neighborhood and you just don't don't think that's a good idea. That did come with a price tag and negotiating with the DOT, we landed on, if the city's willing to cover the cost of the difference of alternatives. Which was approximately four million dollars from fifty-six to sixty million. We would like to to see this alternative rather than than the other. Projecting that out from sixty million into twenty twenty-eight dollars, that's where you're getting the seventy-one million. Is the four to four and a half percent inflation every year in construction just to get out to twenty twenty-eight. Obviously, if it's twenty thirty, it's probably going to be higher than that. The DOT and the city, we were banking on getting a build grant. And unfortunately, we're we were unable to get it in this round. But that that is a twenty-five million dollar shortage if we do not secure a grant. The maximum grant you can get is twenty-five million, so that's why we're open on that. So unless the DOT raises their funding from thirty-two million, I don't think we're interested in going any higher. Because what happened is we we started at four million dollars for this intersection. And if we paid the four million dollars difference for the alternative, got us to eight. And then that cost inflation difference to get us from sixty to seventy-one was split evenly between the DOT, so that's where we landed at the fourteen, so.
Yeah, from the CIP, Chase, I'm seeing that. I'm assuming that's some of the set aside money from the lost. From the local office sales tax, right?
Yeah, and when we get to those slides on a later night, you can see that the the five-year program of the loss to show you that a deficit, like we. We don't, we don't have enough money.
We're not going to get there for that.
We'd probably have to bond for this. So just a reminder, in twenty nineteen for the Viking and fifty-eight, I believe we participated. Eleven million of thirty-eight. So total project was thirty-eight and we participated approximately seven, so about thirty percent of the project.
This is seven ninety cap applied to the street, street projects.
That's a long way off, but is it anticipated to maintain traffic during construction or?
I think we're gonna close Green Hill Road. Highway with the tank.
You're gonna close Green Hill.
Which is that what happened when when it was Viking? Was Viking close? Oh, I can't remember. I just avoided it like.
I think it was. So we'll keep working with the DOT on that. They could come back and, you know, it took ten years to get it in their five-year program and I hate to have them. Kick it back out of their five-year program, but we'll see where we can land with some of this funding. Union Road. So some of you recall, Union Road section from West Twenty Seventh Street, south to. University Avenue, that'd be by Barn Happy there, was actually one programmed as one project. A handful of years ago, we wanted to have the opportunity to go after some grant funding and get the design done early on and and have a kind of shelf ready and. Continue to go after grants. Well, we secured a million-dollar grant and it's approximately a ten-million-dollar project. So it's a fed, it was a federal grant through the Surface Transportation. Grant. Federalizes a project. When you federalize a project. You basically are saying you're going to pay an increase for the Davis Bacon wages and the contractors typically say that's about a twenty to thirty percent. Increase because they have to pay their employees a certain wage rate. So on a ten-million-dollar project. You got a million-dollar grant. It makes no sense that you just federalize the project because you're paying, now the project's going to cost twelve million and we only got a. Million-dollar grant. So what we did was split the project up. We kept the million-dollar funding. And we're targeting the intersection of Twenty Seventh and Union for the first project and there'll be a phase two on a future slide, but. What that did for us is we couldn't go after any more money under the same project. So we split it into two projects. And we went after additional funds. You can see on the next slide, we actually got about five million dollars actually funding through the program, so. This intersection is programmed for twenty twenty-six. This is a letting at twenty twenty-six to be built in twenty-seven. You can see the funding split down there. We did keep our original million-dollar grant and we received the CRP as a carbon reduction program grant. Don't know how long that's going to continue to go on, but that's new to us. We actually secured some of that. And that's related to emissions with a roundabout, things like that, so. So phase two would be from the southern limits of the roundabout at Twenty Seventh and Union. South through the intersection of University and Union. That section with the inflation in future years, because this is programmed a few years after the roundabout. This specific project is approximately ten million, but we went after the four-point-three million dollars through the Surface Transportation Board. Which is was a new grant request. We received that as well as some transportation alternative programming, the TAP grant. A lot of times that's used for trail work. We are proposing a trail on the east side of the road. For the entire corridor, all the way down to university. And then again, the the carbon program, we are proposing a roundabout at the intersection. It's not shown on this image, but University. That corner, any of you have driven through there, a roundabout would be a perfect candidate to maneuver through that intersection. So we are, we are proposing on that. So.
Go ahead.
We're going to start with the roundabout on the north end. About the time that's being completed, the roadway is going to be closed for that project. We're going to move right into this project, so it's going to be a prolonged time of closure of this section of Union. But it was a way for us to get an additional about five, five million dollars.
I guess if anyone living on that stretch will either be able to go north or south, depending on which.
Yeah, we'll have to build a temporary road for individuals to get it now.
So on the south side of that intersection, I I've had calls from property owners over there. Is there any? What disruption of fencing and other things, or is that not going to bother that?
Are you talking about south of University Avenue or south of Twenty Seventh?
South of University Avenue.
So the city actually owns probably three, four hundred feet south intersection and then it's county all the way down to Viking Road. So there's like a half a mile, a quarter mile section in there that's owned by the county, but you're talking about the property on the east side of the road.
Yeah, you too.
Everyone's favorite topic.
Yeah. Tom and Craig, this is your first parking conversation. Yeah, not only your last. But this is a solution.
So that, yeah, this depends, uh, probably a year now. I know when the bank first came to sell, I had a conversation with Ron on it'd be a good candidate to. To try to grab that while it's available and then as well, we had to have a future discussion on the the structure parking lot, which was not currently owned by the city. But we are where we are today. We have those both acquired and we're looking to move forward with a kind of a permanent remedy. Maybe I should say temporary for for a parking solution to offer up more parking downtown. We are completed with the demolition of the bank. We got a temporary lot put back available for through the winter. We are in the design efforts of the permanent parking lot. We are planning right now, it's right around a hundred stalls. Don't hold me to that if it turns out to be ninety-eight or something, but. We're planning hundreds parking stalls. The current West Second Lot has twenty-one stalls in it. And there's two stalls on Second Street that will be eliminated. So technically, as of today, there's twenty-three public stalls available and we're going to be going to a hundred public stalls if anyone has.
Great.
The construction cost of this is approximately one point five million. Just going to go over a couple of other things we did to do this. So we purchased the bank for one point two million. We purchased a structural lot for a hundred and ninety thousand. We also had the demo cost of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And then with the anticipated construction estimate, we're going to be right around at the three to three-point-one million. Uh, for total investment, we're gonna land at seven, about seventy-seven additional public stalls. Which comes out to be forty thousand a stall. And if you've been involved in previous conversations, that's that amount's been from thirty-five to fifty grand or more per stall. That's just what it takes to to build regardless of its flat parking lot and vertical structure.
But it's free parking, right?
Also, if you remember, just for comparison, if we were to build a ramp, I think, what was the projected number of spots in the ramp? Two hundred?
Two hundred some because of the height limitation and some of that.
Yeah.
It was only.
In your guys' handouts, there's a eleven by seventeen packet of renderings. Uh, what I've been doing this last couple of months is working with. How do you how to make a parking lot fit in the in the downtown district? And and I think everyone knows you can build a big flat Walmart parking lots, probably not down with that great in its setting. How do you make it fit in and defined and, uh, we kind of, there's multiple different options to do. We kind of landed on these. I'm gonna call them these L-shaped demarkers in the corners of Third and Washington and Second and Washington to kind of delineate and define the space. And just make make it fit in. Um, we are following all of the zoning regulations with the ten-foot offsets and the screening of live plantings and and those types of things. We have the kind of the historic, uh, light fixtures with the banner arms in the middle is what we're proposing. So I would like some. Comments or, um, if you're all good with what I'm proposing as the landscaping improvements. Uh, to this parking lot, we like different, we did have some challenges, um, speaking with Jen before. Uh, some of this stuff, obviously with with landscaping, it becomes costly and we have been trying to be, um. We did cut out some signage. We had an entrance signing where this blue sign is located, more of a masonry sign. But the costs were just obviously getting too high. We had to cut back somewhere. So, um, we felt this was the the happy medium with just keeping the corner, the markers. And at defining the space, the street names would be on those those signs. So.
So not to, uh. Play on words here, but, uh. Losing stalls, is this where you're, where I'm jumping ahead maybe to where the public bathrooms would be?
I'll get to that.
So.
Well, yeah, we're we're just working on. It worked, didn't it? I think this is awesome, but to put the bathroom on these signos and it'll be good to go.
So the trees. Yeah. Do you have any? Something like this design be possible at our other parking lots?
Uh, depending on the space.
Yeah.
Um, you mean like it's gonna feel that this parking lot, if you wanted to implement little features to kind of tie them all together.
Yeah.
The other parking lots likely don't have the ten-foot offset yet, so it's that'll be difficult because you lose some parking stalls. But to implement maybe a singular brick column, you might be a lot different ways to tie them together, but not the exact.
Sure thing. Sure. I think that would be really good. I think like something that, you know, community main street talks about is just having. Like more consistency. And so I think if we could do that, I think this design is really beautiful. So if we could pull from that.
Yeah, I know anyone's here, but I did speak with Ken Bear and Brent Johnson and they were genuinely supportive of it.
I think the proposal, I think it was great. So I I mean, you know that I like, and that was one of the things that I really like about Main Street. Frankly, all of our roundabouts period is that aesthetically, they're gorgeous, you know, uh, with the planning and. And, you know, you have the small camper deal and you have, yeah, we use that space and this ties in with that same look. And yeah, thanks to your point, Anna, if we had that and other municipal parking lots and that sort of thing. And it looks good.
Well, I do think, personally, I do think there's a level of expectation for our main street. It's like, because if you just throw on a ugly, like, we could just leave it as is now, asphalt overlay. It's got most of the spots we have and we saved one point five million. But I also don't think, one, the community wants that, like, in our downtown. Has been invested in so heavily by the businesses that bringing something like this, one, I think actually makes it feel like it's not just parking. It's in addition to the amenities of downtown. And I know, I think we all always hear some people saying, why do we spend the money on these things in the middle of the roundabouts? And but I would say also, I hear time and again from people coming to this community, the visual aesthetic of it is something people notice.
And I think it has a safety, like, if you ever go somewhere where they don't have anything in the middle. Sometimes it's like, it's almost a safety.
Yeah.
Yeah, just drive over them.
Nine Street, nine Street, ninth and south, it's just, you can see the tracks go right over there.
Chase, I love the, I love the one-way trap.
Chase, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Chase, I have a question for you, a comment. Um. This is one of the most financially fiscal moves that I've seen the city make in a long time. This is a big answer for downtown parking. My only question was, there's been some talk about paid parking. Um, is that possibly gonna be set up to be paid parking or can it be? With, uh, with passes and things like that or gates? Not today, but maybe in the future.
Sure, I can tell you, Craig, this is Jennifer, that just we are planning on treating it right now as just like any other per, um, lot downtown. You can buy permits for it. So that's how we're treating it. I think, as you know, Greg, but, um. There's been lots of conversations about paid parking downtown. They haven't always gone that well. So I would say right now, our plan is not to do, um, paid parking, but I think we all understand. Parking does have a cost to it, like we just talked about. So whether in the future, this council has an interest to talk about, um, paid parking. But right now, our plan would be just to treat it like any other parking lot downtown and people can buy permits. For it and people will be enforcing it.
Yeah, I do think to your point, Craig, I do think the lot's set up really well if we ever implemented paid, especially having the one in, one out. Yeah, it makes it a very convenient way to.
Actually, there's, I didn't want to show it because I didn't want people to misinterpret it. We had rendering showing where the keys would go if we do, and we had them at some point. I had them removed it because people would think we'd implement parking, paid parking at that point. So, um, we are planning for a specific location if that were to happen in the future.
So obviously, that would be all.
Go ahead. You can ride travels last week, um, at some of these tourist attractions, there's none of them that don't have paid parking. None. And they're very popular places, not necessarily all places, but, um, but most of them have paid parking today. And and not that, not that I want to put that on citizens, but, you know, as Jennifer said, parking does have a cost. And and if you're a individual business owner somewhere else in town, you are paying for a parking lot. But, uh, I know those are discussions that are hard to have. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Or Chase, I don't know if you want to mention too, you said you met with me in Main Street, and there was also some discussion too about there might be some amenities they might wanna. Yep. Chip in for too, like bike racks or flower pot, like those kind of things.
There's a little, uh, area on Third Street and Center Lot where maybe some benches and bike rack trash for several weeks ago. Uh, in my conversations with them, Ken mentioned that they do have leftovers funds from the Stretches Gate project. That, um, I'd be having further conversations about some type of funding participation in some of those amenities. So.
I like the, I like the trees, the the times that I've spent with some certain, you know, citizens. They love the tree, they like, you know, and they'll. Or trees, I love the trees, Chase.
It's a reminder to everyone, the trees don't look like that when they first go in. To grow.
I think we should triple our budget for full-size trees.
So if everybody's. If everyone's okay with kind of the landscaping concept, I'll continue to move forward. Yeah, you'll probably see a design contract. This is more of a specialty area, um, to design these masonry walls and signage and things that will give with the consultant. Looks good.
It's kind of a separate topic, but could we currently have, is just the one bus stop? For the fixed route. I know there's one over by, on Washington Casey's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, on Washington Street. So there is on Washington Street too? Okay, I didn't know if this was one or.
Well, they have the flag down area.
Down.
Ask them for the shelter, I guess, for shelter.
Well, just, this would be, I think, an easy, like, it's, there's a lot of space here for people to relax. And also, I didn't know if we had a bus stop near there.
I I thought downtown, there was two actual bus stops, but there's also one marked as a, like, it's a flag down area or.
Okay.
Something like that. Because there's just, we just talked about adding it to our parking map.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Yeah, because there's one upside, but it's like center.
Yeah.
On six.
Yeah, maybe that's the flag down spot.
Yeah, there is one that they just.
Just like a. Yeah. Okay, I'll move on. I don't want to, but I will. So we've, we've heard some, uh, from at least one citizen in particular about, uh, the need for downtown restroom. And I know months ago, like, through the idea by Danny and and, um, thought we'd talk about it at a cool setting, just to to get thoughts whether we move forward with it or not. But threw together some numbers and potentially, uh, forgive the rendering. It's an AI rendering placed in a, uh, uh, the previous images. So it doesn't look the greatest, but, um, it would eliminate some parking stalls. Our proposal would, if we did include it as part of this project, it would be along, it could actually be along Second or Third Street. It'd just be mirrored at the other end if it were, um, eliminate between six and eight parking stalls there. Size would probably be around twenty-four to thirty feet. Uh, you see the anticipated cost there. Um, and then obviously after that, we'd have some O and M as it relates to the cleaning and vandalism. Um, that there's a lot of, uh, there's more cons than pros as it relates to a project like this. You know, you do have the the vandalism and the maintenance cost, safety concerns, and is this really the best location? Do you feel that somebody that's walking in the four hundred block is actually going to walk all the way down here to go to the restroom? Or are they gonna go in a business and use the restroom? Um, the pros are convenience, you know, tourism, accessibility, um, potential economic boost.
So what did you pass this by Community Main Street too, or or just the other?
We did talk a little bit about it. They really had no reference on it at all, to be honest with you. They think people use the downtown business restrooms. So.
Here's a, here's a thought, Chase. Maybe in some future commercial project, maybe a building could apportion part of it to do that. Instead of just this standalone, maybe it's on Main Street. Just a thought.
So speaking of that, we had. Some kind of. Little bit of, yeah, Steph.
Stephanie.
Did that, did that die or what?
Yeah. Um, you know, the Plaza Restrooms, um, there was some discussion about the city, uh, having those open and paying for those. And it was going to be a pretty hefty price to add to make those available. So we ultimately decided that wasn't for them.
And then also on Main Street and the, uh, where the convention place is gonna be now, that was discussed at one time too.
Oh, you're right. Yes. Um, yeah, that there was some discussion with that owner. Uh. Yeah, I don't remember if it came down to cost a little bit there, but also the restrooms were weighed in the back. Go all the way through this and it got into some liability things, uh, where, uh, they wanted us to cover liability of somebody walking back to the bathroom. It's kind of hard to know. Are they coming in to be a customer or were they going to the bathroom? What, how much should we really take liability for? So I think that one did fall apart more on the insurance part of it.
It's another way of saying that there are, to Craig's point, other possible opportunities that maybe don't involve to the project like this.
Yeah.
For public bathrooms.
And if if something like this was included as part of the parking lot project, it'd probably delay it a year. Because we have to get an architect on board and.
And you want to do it at the same time, because that way you don't want to rip up the, your parking lot.
It also is a little bit of a different type of funding challenge from the downtown parking lot infrastructure. Can be, we can use the downtown TIF. Right. The restrooms are a little more difficult. We'd have to prove a public building analysis and some of that. And so anyways, you would just have to come up with some different funding.
Right.
For that.
Standalone like this, there's a lot of things that don't make sense. You know, it's gotta have its own HVAC system. It's gotta have all these things.
Yep.
You know. Uh, we can't, especially, I mean, I assume it wouldn't be, it would be a Four Seasons type of deal. See, I have that.
Yep.
And just water heater, HVAC, yeah. See a lot of work outside.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be proposed.
You can just cold camp in there if I want.
You know.
Don't pray coffee gets you out.
What if we, uh, approach the the people that are interested in having this, that if they finance it, they could have name rights?
Well, I'm gonna, for the sake of time, I'm gonna probably think that.
Yeah.
Soon as it's.
Yeah. Including that, that was fun.
Yeah, I do. I will say credit to staff or at least putting together the estimates, looking at it. So we had.
Yep.
So update on Creekside Business Park. Uh, we consider this, we call it our Gibson property. It's the corner of, uh, Highway Twenty and Hudson Road. Uh. Project began this last year. It was a bid project of about eight and a half million dollars. And a lot of it's been completed to date. If you've been by the area, we're getting ready to open up Richway Avenue. The contractor was actually plowing it here the other day. There's some landscaping improvements in the roundabouts that are yet to be completed. Uh, we got kind of the Loop Drive, what we're calling Gibson Drive, and then we have the two new roundabouts. I can tell you that Shane has had a lot of interest in these lots already. So.
People think it's gonna be a cost though. That's the rumor, okay?
We should leak it to Aspen.
There you go. Speaking of.
We put the covenant restrictions on this, it can only.
So I'd like to amend that to also to Greater Joe's. Yes.
Well, let's get out the rich ones then.
It originally was about just over seventy acres and I think there's sixty acres of, uh, lots that are available. Right now, basically. So it's nice to have that inventory available.
Give the cost number to Greater Joe's and we'll stay.
Yeah. Everyone's favorite project. Um, nothing really new from what most of you heard at our joint meeting. Um, we'll see a few, I guess, for some of the the new council members. Um, this goes back many, many years. The the DNR, uh, wanted jurisdictions to, uh. They're likely going to be, um, upgrading their nutrient limits, making them more strict in the future. And they wanted everyone's plan on how they're going to reduce their nutrients by a specific time. They're not setting a timeline, but they want a plan from every jurisdiction on that. And this dates back to. Two thousand eight. Uh, we previously had, uh, digester improvements around twenty twenty, twenty nineteen timeframe, which is a multimillion dollar project. We ended up pushing it off because we knew this, there was this larger upgrade project coming. Um, so, uh, most of you were part of the design approval, uh, project. Uh, it was about nine point, nine point nine million, which was grand. Um, they're currently in the middle of design, proposing to be at thirty percent this next spring. Uh, and then we're looking to bid the project in twenty twenty-seven. We originally thought it was gonna be three years. I think now it's looking more like a four-year, four-year project. So we're still continuing to move forward, um, that. Right now, the current projection in twenty twenty-five dollars is about a hundred and forty-six million dollars. And then that midpoint of construction, which would be around twenty twenty-nine, um, like I said, we've worked from twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty-one would be that kind of a four-year window. Uh, so if you look at the midpoint, it's kind of what the the price tag is looking like. We've had, what, in two, at least two conversations over the last few years on rates and what that looks like. And we're doing all the projection numbers. And I think as we get closer to the final prod, product, we're, we're gonna have a better idea on what that looks like. Um. But, uh, yeah, unless you have anyone else with that, but.
Right. I think like you said, when we just don't know what construction costs are gonna be, it's hard to know, like, are we gonna continue to need, you know, seven? Or do they have to be twelve percent or, you know, whatever it is, but it's, so yes, but we know, I think we're, let's see, this July will be our kind of our last year. And the current set of rate increases, like we had the five years of seven percent will be at the last one. So we know that we'll have to be talking about what are we doing after that inning.
Yeah, so historically, I would say over the last, I don't know, numerous years, we've done five-year increments. It'd been nine percent, seven percent. It might have been five percent for a little bit of time there, but there's always been a rate increase. As it relates to the sewer fund, which actually has set us up pretty good in in reserves for this project. We have quite a bit of reserves to utilize towards it. Uh, we do have a, uh, interest-free design loan, a three-year design loan that we're part of right now. So, uh, and we'll look at, uh, uh, low-rate, um, SRF loans, if that's possible, when it, when it comes up. So.
It was pretty good in reserves.
So like twenty, we're at like twenty million right now that we've been trying. So like twenty, we're at like twenty million right now that we've been trying to save up for, I mean, but you know, also again, we're talking about a hundred and forty-six million, but um it was the twenty million, you know, chunks off a little bit of it.
Covers your gap between now and twenty twenty.
Dollars. Right. So um, you know, and I think one of those things that we know is we'll be looking at what is the best structure, way to structure the debt, you know, Chase mentioned, we could maybe get the low interest loan through their SRF to the state. We also know the good thing we have is we do have lots of GO capacity. So we could sell potentially GO bonds at a lower rate, but it does use up our capacity. But as you know, we only use like seven or eight percent of our capacity, and we have a lot of capacity, you know, to do so. And or it's a combination of all those, you know, is it, is it part of an SRF, part of GO? Do we still need some revenue by whatever it is?
Well, would we have to compete these bonds against the bonds for fifty-eight and like the old bonds?
Well, I think yes, if we're talking about bonding for those, like you were talking about, like the mayor mentioned, right? If we did lost option and we just bonded for Green Hill, it is, it is GO. Also, the only difference is, is it's both competing for the capacity. But we're Green Hill, we'd probably be using property taxes to repay it, the debt on the sewer, even though we're selling GO, we would use sewer revenues to pay it. So it's, it's not competing from how we're paying it. It is competing for GO capacity. By how much we can have in debt.
Uh, uh, just a few of the major process upgrades. Uh some of your call, our current process is kind of a trickling filter. It's one of three communities in Iowa of our size. Ames is another one. Ames is actually going through their upgrade uh right now. Um, it's a extremely outdated process, and it's hard to remove the nutrients down to the new levels that the DNR would be requiring. So the proposed new uh method would be, uh, we call it the BNR process. It's a biological nutrient removal process. Basically what that is, it's a large concrete vault with aeration at the bottom of the tank to promote the biological activity in that. So it is a significant large concrete structure um that would be installed as part of this project. The right side of your photo is, is something that we've been discussing uh for, I don't know, a year and a half. Uh we went and visited multiple sites in Wisconsin. Um biosolids are the solid product that, that is left after the, the process. Right now, we have a, a class B biosolids, which can only be land applied, and we have some farm ground that the city owns that we applied on. There are some restrictions through the DNR about applying in the air, waterway and those types of things, but moving to a class A requires significant drying of the product, and it dries it down to a, almost a powder form in which you could pelletize it and sell it to the public or give it away to the public. Um, if any of you have ever heard of Malorganite, this is basically the product, uh Malorganite used as fertilizer. Um, a lot of these places that we went and visited, like uh Wisconsin Dells puts it in big uh and a chemical bags and landscapers and farmers come and take it. I think they, they don't sell it. They just provide it to them at no cost and get rid of it, get rid of the product, but um that's kind of what the, the drying facility looks like at the Dells. It's basically a, a heated drum inside there that keeps rotating and uh comes out as a drying product on the other end. It's a significant, significant cost to add towards the pro- uh project, but um we feel that uh uh it's a, it's a good thing to implement. It actually uh don't want to speak to PFAS at all or you get to that point?
Sure. So PFAS is a forever chemical, it's in in just about everything, but it ends up in the waste water, it ends up in biosalts. Um, and there are some states that are uh not allowing you to land apply anymore. Mostly the Northeast. Um, if it would come to that, then we would be looking at either having to incinerate our biosols, so we'd probably be shipping it long distances and have it incinerated or landfilling. Either way, we would be paying trucking costs and have a dryer products and save on those trucking costs. It's kind of a, a long term looking towards the future if something like this would happen. This is gonna give us a ton of flexibility down there. And contain some of those cost increases if it comes to that. Typically, I was gonna follow, follow on all these environmental regulations, so. Uh, it's just the difference. Could potentially come next one year, so.
Iowa's pretty behind. Um, you want to speak to the limits, the current limits that is potentially limited here at one?
Yes, our, our nutrient production limits, nitrogen phosphorus would be ten and one, ten parts per minute, one part nitrogen phosphorus that hit the project. Uh, Wisconsin is actually one and point one, so very ten times.
Where Iowa's behind.
The, the difference in Iowa, the water goes. Difference is Iowa, our water goes to the river, it goes downstream, goes away. Wisconsin, Minnesota, it goes into a lake. And it can't be away, so it just accumulates in those water bodies. So that's one of the dangers, but Iowa with a system material.
Also, fairness.
Just goes away.
It just goes.
It just goes away.
The Mississippi Delta.
Let's go.
Dead zone down there, right?
So I think in a previous presentation, uh something I heard uh regarding what we call C Mar, it's a construction manager at risk. I think this is new to Iowa around twenty twenty-three, and it's the way bidding the project wor- uh works. Usually we're used to the traditional bid package where it's uh design bid build. This is more along the lines of you bringing the contractor on board in the early stages of the project. So there's advantages to that and there's disadvantages. So what happens with this? To our knowledge, no one in Iowa has yet to do it, uh but at approximately the thirty percent design mark, which will be May of twenty twenty-six, and the reason I'm bringing this up is we're gonna need some direction in regarding this. Uh, you send out an RFP to hire a contractor. The contractor comes on board at that time and is basically part of the design team from thirty percent to a hundred percent in bid. And what they're doing is they're basically bidding every phase of the project and providing you um comments regarding value engineering. Hey, you can save ten million here if you build it this way or, or, or change this. You can save a, a couple percent on the project. Um. The, the contractor actually takes on a majority of the risk, but what they're getting out of it is they're guaranteeing what we call the GMP, the guaranteed maximum price. So from day one, you know the guaranteed maximum price. They come in and says a hundred and sixty-five million is your guaranteed maximum price. They show you their profit margins. They show you get to see all of it. So then, then at the time of bid, instead of seeing, hey, the estimated cost of construction is a hundred and forty-six and the lowest bid you get is two oh five. It's not gonna happen with this process. You're going to know it from the first phases. Um, so there's that advantage to it. The disadvantages are is the contractor that's hired as part of the C Mar, are they really looking out for the city or are they looking out for themselves? For the profit margins. Um, it's new to Iowa. Nobody's done it yet. It's a lot of legal things that haven't been worked out yet. There's some talk that there's a project in, is it two cities falls, a four hundred million dollar upgrade, and they're likely going to bid of a C Mar. So initially a year ago, we were saying, yeah, it's, we, we probably should try it. Um, I, it'd be beneficial. Um, there's been a couple Ohio projects that had bid that have had some disadvantages that we've kind of changed our thoughts to we would like to bid it as a traditional project. Um.
What were the challenges when you get a bio?
The the upfront RFP, when you get the consult or the, the contractor on board, the cost varied from two hundred and fifty to one point five million, two hundred and fifty thousand to one point five million. And usually it's the selection of the contractor in which you have the best relationship with. In, in most cases, they're telling us because um you could get a, someone could low bid it upfront, but get, have a guaranteed maximum price that's, that's higher than, than the rest, so. Um, and with, we, we had Kevin involved in a couple meetings and obviously the legal challenges to the fair bidding laws is, that's why I think everybody's been hesitant in, in Iowa to start that.
You don't want to be first, second, or even fifth on this kind of.
Yeah, we need to let somebody else make some mistakes. Yeah, I agree. I agree.
Well, and Chase, our design contractor, Strang, they originally thought it was pro.
Yeah.
They've changed.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
What's that?
They're the ones that initially presented it.
But they, they've, they've kind of changed their.
So I think there, there's another office of Strang out of Ohio that's worked on a large project in Iowa, and they feel that they're the cost for the project were much higher than what, what they, they adopted it. Yeah. Just because the contractors.
Yeah.
It's no problem at the start. Knowing that the, the contractors take on a bunch of extra risk that.
Oh, yeah.
Money to it.
Well, then if they guessed wrong.
Right.
They, they have, always said they have been sent up to check corners, then you have to pay.
I don't see any. No, go ahead, Chase.
The only thing I was gonna mention is that I, I know some individuals that are in more of the vertical construction, specifically Canute's, and they actually did the, the engineer building at, at U and I, but they're getting away from traditional bidding and going to only bidding C Mar projects. And the reason for that is they can guarantee their profit margins. It's to their benefit. If it's traditional build and they bid a project and get a low bid, if they miss something in their bidding process, they have to eat that cost. In this type, they're not eating it. They're guaranteed their profit.
I'm, I'm with uh Chase on that one. Um, I don't have any, I haven't had any customers in my past that really want to jump on to a project where you get your guaranteed profit. And um, um, most of them end up being wanting to bid because it's, it's a it's a guarantee and it puts it back on the contractor. Uh and most of the time it is less for us in a bidding situation. This may be.
At this time, as we approach the thirty percent of uh design mark, we're not anticipating going through this process. We're gonna move forward with more of a traditional bid.
Don't forget, Jordy.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, Ulrich Park Lift Station, this is.
Kind of new.
Checking, we've got about seventeen, eighteen minutes, so.
I can get to. If I could.
You can do it.
So we can maybe get through Chases and we could stop before Craig or Stephanie.
Yeah.
Right? Maybe get through Chases items. If that's okay with everyone and.
Yep, this is about where we thought it was to be brief. All right. Ulrich Park Lift Station Northwest corner of town in the, kind of the center of the photo there, you see on the left side, you see First and Union intersection where that roundabout will be going. Um. There's no sewer service up in the northwest corner. Um, it has to come off of the, the railroad section, as you can see in that, that red line there. Um, but it's been in the CIP for many years as an unfunded project, waiting for it to be kind of development driven. Um, there, in the last three to four years, we've had some interest out here and a lot of interest over the last twelve months, specifically at the parcel in the northeast corner of the First and Union intersection. And the challenges are getting the sewer there. So uh with their development, trying to come online, uh we thought it'd be best time to, to move it from an unfunded project to a funded project. Uh, install a force main. It'll be, have to be a new lift station installed, kind of where it says project, the location there. At Ulrich Park, there'd be a new lift station. That red line would be a force main to pump it up to our gravity sewer. And then we could extend gravity sewer along Skyview Drive and have it available to help kind of promote the development out in, out in this area. So just kind of an update on the timing of the project. We're looking to bid it here uh this next year. Work on it in the fall of twenty-six through uh twenty-seven. Could be online as late, uh as, as early as late twenty twenty-seven, uh not early twenty twenty-eight.
This will give us a chance. We've had some immediate interest in people wanting to look at doing housing up here. So having this schedule then gives some of those people to go ahead to start looking at, want to do some development in this area, knowing that this is coming. That's kind of why our timing on this is this, because we know there's some people that develop some housing up here. This would kind of meet some of those timelines that they'd want to look at doing.
Just out of curiosity, how does that affect the park?
Um, the footprint of the lift station, what's the building size?
It's pretty small, since you're like twelve three. Uh.
Uh, if you've ever been to Ulrich Park, there's that small parking lot, and it actually sit kind of in the northwest corner of the.
Oh, would you like take up the?
It's actually gonna be a play feature.
Small building.
Yeah.
Put a slide on it.
Down into the pit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pushes you up to the top.
Like you'll see, the ground is really small, but it's pretty deep.
And then like you get to it, you have to like go through the park, I mean, like in the construction phase?
Yes. Well, well, so the red line is a force main, it'd be a small pipe that's pushed by force, so that'll be bore.
Yep.
That red pipe will be bored, so a lot of the trees and stuff won't, we have been in that. Another sanitary sewer project, corner of Green Hill Road, University Avenue.
Oh, look, Chase, is that a, is that an eight inch line? Can you bore an eight inch line or?
The for- force moves.
It's an eight inch line? I thought eight was the.
Speeds on the no ground, the.
This is out.
Okay, all right.
Uh. The other sewer extension, um ca- kind of be north of Aldrich Elementary at the corner of Green Hill and University. Our sewer kind of ends there. So anything west of the elementary school where Arbor's is currently kind of with their final phases. West of that has no sewer service. Um, so to develop out further west of the elementary school is not possible. You'd have to run the sewer probably a mile to get there. Um, so this is kind of the first phase to at least get it closer to the city limit lines. And maybe in a couple more years, we'll have the phase two to get it out there even farther to help promote the area out west of Aldrich Elementary. So this one we're proposing to, to bid and build it here in twenty twenty-six. Entrance signage. I know this came up a couple of years ago about the, the idea to replace some of our dated signage, which is uh twenty years old now. Um, we currently only have two entrance sign locations, one down by Camping World at Ridgeway and fifty-eight, and then there's one north of town on fifty-eight north of uh Lone Tree, um area there for southbound traffic, but we are proposing to get those updated with that, that kind of uh cohesive, uh cohesive design with our roundabouts, implementing the limestone and a large limestone slab, including the column features. Um, I consider it to be more like a national park kind of entrance feel with the tapered columns and the, the limestone.
Louie, the, the one that you're proposing on fifty-seven, is that what your next title is?
Yeah, that's the one that's proposed on fifty-seven and Union Road coming in from the west. And that's also going to be built with our Gibson Creekside Project, which is at Ridgeway and Hudson Road. That'd be assigned for northbound Hudson Road traffic coming off of twenty of this same segment.
So do we need to acquire prod- property for the Union and fifty-seventh?
That'll actually be on the next agenda. Got the right way to do.
Jump in ahead.
Asking the right questions. So yeah, you see those two red dots? Those are the ones I'm referring to, uh Union First and Ridgeway and Hudson Road to be built. Let's say by the end of twenty twenty-six, those will both be in, in the two orange colors are future projects. That's the Highway fifty-eight and Dunkerton Road and in the fifty-eight Ridgeway ones. Uh, and those could be um something of a similar design, maybe not exact, but we try to make it uh that them all tie together. So right now we propose to have four entrance signs in those locations. Just a similar update to years past on the transfer station. Um. Few years ago, we were required by the DNR to have kind of a waiver meant storage of materials in the flood plain. Uh, most of you know, the entire transfer station is in the flood plain. Um, we had kind of stockpile of different materials out back of the complex there where you drop them off. We had shingle recycling out back there. Um, DNR basically said that, hey, if the water ever comes up, you cannot have these materials just laying on the ground. They have to be in a mobile container. And then be able to move them if the water level's coming up, which obviously for shingles specifically made it almost impossible because you have so many containers out there for the shingle recycling, and we weren't getting anything off the shingle recycling. Even the, the Aspro who was taking the shingles didn't have a lot of use for those. Um, it's very minimal that they can use a percentage of that in the new asphalt mix. So really, they weren't. So really, they weren't interested in continuing the program at all either. So a couple of years ago, we eliminated that uh, when we were required to have these waivers. So our fear at that time was, at what point is the DNR going to tell us that we cannot even do this type of operation in the flood plain at all? You need to move the facility. So at that time, we programmed something in the CIP for if anything were to come up. At this time, the DNR is still allowing us to operate under the same conditions with the mobile containers. But we are keeping it programmed in the CIP. We did, did move it back a couple of years for potential land per- uh, purchase, site study, those types of things. It wouldn't be for the specific building, but we need to uh, lay out where the future facility may go, purchase the land, those types of things. If the DNR were ever to tell us, we cannot operate at that facility anymore. Uh, this is my, oh, I forgot a couple of slides, compost site, this is just an update. Um, everyone knows with the Emerald Ash Board, the last ten years, uh, has caused us to have a lot of material at the compost site. I can tell you that the residents love the compost site, it's very heavily used, um, basically at all times of the year. The contract price for the contractor to come in and process the material has increased significantly. I wanna say it almost doubled. It is currently at two hundred thousand, um, and they come in, I would say, four or five times a year when we get a huge pile. Uh, uh, in the center of the site there and they come out and mulch it uh, down to a a product in which we can get back to the residents either as compost uh, or mulch product. Um, that really stemmed a lot of our re- recent refuse rate increases. So the refuse fund includes the the yard waste, the compost sites. So a lot of the previous rate increases that we just went through was due to this con- uh, contract increase. The only reason I'm bringing it to your attention, over the last year, we've been discussing internally that we have someone at the front gate for almost all hours to monitor, to making sure that you are a Cedar Falls resident and you're able to use it. Because we get contractors all the time bringing in trailers, trailers and material in which we have to pay to process. There's dumping it there, that in the future, to try to avoid continuing to raise the refuge rates may establish a rate structure. Maybe we allow contractors to go in, if they gotta weigh their trailer, they're gonna pay their fee, they gotta, it's so hard to keep them out. But maybe we just at some point let them in, but they have to pay. So just bringing it to your attention that that may end up happening in the future, depending on how these contractor costs go. It also is a challenge that residents can't take the product fast enough. We've got a large, we call it our deck space out there, the deck becomes full with processed mulch material. We've had people come in from out, if someone comes in from out of the community right now, say, I wanna dump truck a mulch, we give it to them.
Yeah.
We have, we've had contractors come from over by the Mississippi to get it, they end up processing, tolerating it again. But we can't get rid of it fast enough. So a lot of the property that we've been buying in the industrial park, before we do mass grading, we go get rid of a lot of the product. We spread out compost mulch and then when they do a lot of the earthwork, it gets mixed in the soil.
All we need to do is act like a furniture store where just like, every three months, we're like, go on a business sale. Come get your compost, just kidding, we're back in business.
So surprising to me though, because like how fast that pile outside, like when they put the pile like outside of the door. It's like, people are like ants, they're all over.
We've been to the back, I mean, we got like a football field that's twenty.
I said, this is a good example, one of those things where, thank everyone, this is incredibly appreciated community asset.
Yeah.
But since we don't charge for it, it means it's just in your tax rates, in your refuse rates.
Right, it's, yeah, so we do charge for it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I also wondered Chase about, you know, like, if people could call to get like a trailer for their house. Like if you could pay, you know, I'll come pay fifty bucks and you fill my trailer and then I can take it. I feel like people would do that.
Like, uh, you mean like you come to the site and you just want them to load it?
Yeah.
We do that all the time.
But we don't pay for it.
Correct.
That, I think, what if we charged for that? I feel like people might, I think people would be in favor of that. I'd be more than happy to pay for it.
So Chase, you're proposing to, you're charging the contractor, because you're proposing, you're proposing to charge anybody to utilize?
So I wanna, it's a free service to the residents, I don't really wanna change that.
No.
We're just trying to keep the amount of material out. Because ultimately, the residents are having to pay to have it processed.
Yeah, right.
If we priced equipment.
To do it ourselves, yeah, I'd have to go back and look at it, but I know we used to, we used to do it ourselves, we had.
Right, but before we hired this contractor, we did that analysis.
Yeah.
And it was cheaper, but again.
Now that.
We understand equipment prices have probably gone up too, but yes, we did it. The products, I mean, the, the, the compost and the mulch is better now, right? I mean, nothing, you know, shade the, before, but my husband loves to go to the transfer station, the compost site. At Ace Hardware on a Saturday.
So uh, ADA Assessment Transition Plan, uh, actually, a couple of years ago, the city was notified. It was actually under, I believe, Title Six, the federal requirements in, which I believe that's where our funding comes from, was under Title Six. But ADA is under Title Two, um, the ADA requirements. But to have an assessment plan of all city-owned infrastructure, whether it's buildings, parks, um, a lot of the uh, review was done by uh, Jamie Castle, our building inspector, and then Matt Buck, our building maintenance supervisor. And actually, recently, they provided us a, an update on kind of all the improvements that are needed, whether it's a change in the ADA requirement or if we end up being grandfathered in. An example would be uh, the height of a a bathroom countertop has changed by two inches. So we wanna follow the ADA requirements, we have to get that changed. So what you see in the CIP now is actually we have a program, a project ongoing. Uh, each year, I think we programmed twenty thousand dollars to put towards uh, improvements at whatever facility it may be. And try to prioritize those and making some of those improvements to meet the kind of the ADA requirements, so. I think, as much as Craig might be itching to jump in here, I think we'll hold off on this for. Unless, unless they can cover in two minutes?
Smart, smart move.
Okay, so um, real quick, I mean, I'm not sure we have to wrap up, we'll just jump right back into this on Monday, it's kinda nice that we have it coming right up.